Good evening, welcome to the Lompoke City Council meeting. Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Homdal.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Lingle.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ashley Costa.
Present.
Mayor John Lynn.
Here. We should note, for those of you who picked up your agenda, that roll call got left off in the cut and paste of life, but our city clerk was arranging for her daughter's wedding, which was held this past weekend and was beautiful. It was. Okay, and now for invocation. Anita, are you here? Pitch hitter Pastor Doug. If you'd all please rise.
Okay, at best. Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we get together and we pray, God, that you will give wisdom and insight to the men and women that are leading and directing our city, Father, that you will give them insight. We pray for each one here, Father, that whatever needs to be said or done, that we do it in a character that would be fitting to you. We just thank you for this opportunity. And everyone said, amen.
And if you join me, I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'm going to preempt the city administrator's report for just a second with an announcement that we've all been dying to make for a very long time. So, all of you will probably remember, back in 2004, a restaurant came to Lompoke that we all thought would be good to have, but things just didn't work out. There were issues and some people blamed the restaurant, some people blamed the city, and we didn't have it. And then, none of you know that in 2011, they came again and talked to myself and the city administrator, and we were making a little ground with them, and then a new law passed in Sacramento, and they kind of said, "You know, we're going to figure out what this impact is, and then we'll see if we're going to do what we're going to do in California." And then, at the first of this year, in January, that restaurant, that I still haven't told you, contacted Teresa, our Economic Development Director, and said, "Hey, you know, we're kind of interested in Lompoke again." And then, in April, the Economic Development Committee worked with them and took them around to some properties, and then Teresa had about 1,000 phone calls with them. And then, in December through April, there was more conversations, and then they submitted some tenant plans for us to kind of look at back in April, and then they submitted an application for review of the proposed signage in May, and then they got their building plans approved in June, and they picked up their permit on July 8th. And I'm happy to report that Applebee's is now under construction in the former Hollywood Video location at the front of the Walmart Center. So, we finally got it done. Yeah, that's worth a round of applause. So, I want to particularly point out that Teresa and her staff carried the water on this and the ones that made this happen. So, all good things, and thanks to the Building Department, too. Okay. Sorry, Chief, had to get that in first.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I have no status reports or announcements to make, other than that.
Okay. So, I not only got it in first, but I stole your thunder. Well, I got the emails, so I figured it was my job. Okay, any other staff announcements or requests that we have to do? Nope. Okay. So, now, for those of you who are out there to talk to us about something that is not on the agenda, we would take that, or if the item is on the agenda but you can't stay, we would take that. If you are here to talk with us about the victim's advocate for the Police Department, I would ask you to kind of hold off until we get to that, because it is the first item after the consent calendar. So, who would like to be first?
My name is Paul Rosso, and I'm a resident of Lompoke for the last time has flown, 40 years. I am talking on a subject that's not on the agenda tonight, which will be in two weeks, concerning the charge for water charges and wastewater charges, which were sent out to the public. I have, first of all, for the city, this is the official response I'm required to give. These charges are excessive and unwarranted. I went through all the material, and based on the facts, based on our 2012 water usage, since I wanted to do it for a full year, 2013 would increase our water usage 29 percent, 2014, cost would increase 49 percent, 2015, 72 percent, 2016, 98 percent, and 2017, a whopping 127 percent, which in dollar terms are -- 2012 bill was a little over $1,100. In 2017, it will be $2,500, $1,400 increase. And as 75-year-old senior citizens on a relatively fixed income, what are our alternatives? Well, I can let all my grass and plants die from lack of water, zero gifts to grandchildren, do not have grandchildren visit because they use water. Which would we pick? Obviously, none of these. A 5 percent rise in water and wastewater rates each year would be fair and reasonable. And as I said in here, I will send a formal letter, which I have handed to the city clerk. But I have a concern with some of the material presented to us. I don't think it's legally correct, because there are two errors in the material. One is the winter averaging formula for wastewater is not included. And something I want to point out, if you decide, well, the water rates have gone up too much, and the wastewater rates have gone up too much in the first three months of next year, because this year's gone by, I'm just going to not use very much water. Well, it turns out that wouldn't count, because they throw the low year out. In fact, the -- according to Linda Wall, who I spoke to at the city, the formula is somewhat complex for wastewater. The average of the January, February, and March bill, water usage over six years, with the high and low years excluded, and then you take the interior value -- sorry, I'm an engineer -- of the four remaining years, and calculate wastewater based on monthly amounts. And then, there's a minor mathematical error on page four. So, and the reason I'm coming here early, unfortunately, important issues are generally an issue that's presented when most people are on vacation. And I feel this is an unreasonable time period during the summer months to even have people discuss it, because you'll probably get very few replies, official replies. And the other comment I have to make, I find that saying you cannot use email, but you have to write a formal letter, is fine for me, I did it, is not living in the 21st century, which I think we live in. Even you can register on the Internet to vote, and that's an unreasonable constraint putting on people. Mayor and City Council, I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Mayor, councilpeople, my name is James Yant, and I live across from Ryan Park. I'm here to discuss the problems from the Flower Festival and what went on over there. Apparently, the city did not enforce the parking regulations as far as unlicensed or unpermitted automobiles in the whole neighborhood. My next-door neighbors, the Fairbanks', they called the police two times, and no one responded. My neighbors around the corner, the Vala -- Valas, they had the same problem. It seems like the city has let the parking influence the Flower Festival. Also, it's like the city of Lompoke and the Ryan neighborhood, they have an agreement that was signed back in the 80s as far as the size of the Flower Festival, the size of the carnival that goes on there, the noise, the parking, everything. That has not been addressed lately. Apparently, the city's forgotten about it. I have a photograph from an aerial view of the early 80s on how the Flower Festival and the carnival went on. It's grown tenfold, the noise, the parking, everything. Ryan Park is a beautiful park. It's for soccer, football, baseball, kids running, playing, yelling and screaming. It's not a carnival. Ryan Park is a park, not a fairground. It's time that the city got serious about relocating this carnival and the zoo that goes on there. And then, our neighbors, my whole neighborhood is completely upset. People leave town. They don't support it anymore. It's going downhill. I don't want to -- anyway, I'm expressing my views, and I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you very much.
I'd be excited to get a copy of that 1980s agreement, because I haven't been able to find one here, so if one of the residents has one.
My neighbor Ron Fairbanks, he's looked for his. There are other people that have them. The Valas, they're looking for theirs. I came in after it was agreed, but it's an agreement between the city and the Ryan Park neighborhood. Also, I mean, what's the use of putting these signs up when no one adheres to the parking? My wife was cited with a citation about five years ago, because hers had slipped onto the ground. She was given a ticket. The whole week, there were cars parked in front of our house, our neighbor's house, no permits or anything. It's just, we've had enough. The neighborhood has had enough.
Hey, if you could find that document for me, it'd be very, very helpful.
I'll look. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Anne Rouget, and today I'm speaking to you as President of the Library Board of Trustees. I have a statement, and I need to read it, because I might forget something here. As you know, on tonight's consent calendar, in item four, approval of the City of Lompoke's Compensation Plan for Management Supervisory and Confidential Employees and the Compensation Plan for Unrepresentative Employees for the time period beginning July 1, 2013, in Resolution Number 5741, parentheses 11. On behalf of the Library Board of Trustees, I would like to inform you that this item, as currently presented, does not extend funding to end concessions or provide an increase in base salaries to any library employees. Tonight, I would ask that you consider agendizing discussion of this for a future council meeting as soon as possible, and consider extending the same funding being applied to other city employees to library employees as well. Very briefly, it's important to note that the library does have its own compensation plan, separate from the City of Lompoke. However, the Lompoke Board of Trustees has historically always mirrored the decisions made by the city and council, and adopted the same compensation plan for library employees. Issues similar to this have come up in the past. In 2005, the Library Board of Trustees moved to keep salaries and benefits in line with the city by approving amendments to the compensation plan regarding changes in PERS retirement benefits, including additional funding provided by the city for all PERS employees working at the Lompoke Library. Also, during the fiscal year 2011 budget process, when the institution of employee concessions and furloughs were mentioned, it was recognized that it was a choice for the Library Board of Trustees to adopt the same compensation plan as the city. Since the city and council had no direct control over the library employees taking furloughs, it was decided to make a 10 percent reduction in the allocation to the library. That 10 percent reduction in 2009, 2011 forced the library into making several cuts in service, including instituting the same furloughs that applied to other city employees and closing for six hours on Sundays. There has been no increase or change in the city's allocation to the library since then. There are probably many questions you have regarding this issue. It also lends itself to a larger discussion of the library in general and its relationship with the city. The way the library currently operates is with an administrative library board of trustees that reports to city council. The library is in all functionality a city department, although technically, according to state code, the library is not a department. Previous library director Molly Gerald researched this quite heavily in 2011, in conjunction with the city attorney Joe Penoni and management services director Brad Wilkie, and found many other examples of libraries in similar situations across California. This moment is not the time to explore the topic, but library staff would be happy to work with city staff and council to further explore and clarify the relationship between the library and the city. As for the compensation plans and funding issues, including the library, this decision would add costs of $17,648.52, and which adds less than 1 percent to the proposed appropriations. To summarize, the library is a city department in functionality. It's a vital part of city services. The library is embedded in the city operationally and has been eligible for the same funding to improve salaries and benefits as other city employees in the past. Please consider discussing this issue at a future meeting and extending the decisions made tonight regarding compensation plans for all other City of Lompoke employees, to include library staff as well. I thank you for your time, and our staff and our Board of Trustees will be happy to work with you on talking about this issue and the discussion and making a decision on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Don't be bashful, come on down. Oh, I know you're not bashful.
My name is Serena Bruce, and I am part of the construction team with Grid Alternatives Central Coast. We're based in a Tascadero office, and we work and we install solar for qualified income clients, all the way from Santa Cruz to Santa Barbara County. And we're actually fortunate enough to work with the City of Lompoke. We're going to be here doing an install on August 6th and 7th, and it'll be our first install in the City of Lompoke. We're really excited about it. We have a lot of people that are supporting us, including the city and some youth groups that are going to be coming out. If you wanted to know a little bit more about Grid Alternatives, we're a low-income, nonprofit solar company. It's a nonprofit that we put solar on low-income housing. We work with Habitat for Humanity, Self-Heeled Peoples Housing, are just kind of a few people that we work with. And we go and resit, or we go to new incoming homes, and we put solar on top of their house. So, we're very excited to be part of that. And if you guys have any questions, we just wanted to announce it to everyone, they're going to be around your area. We are having an orientation, because we work with volunteers, we bring them out, we teach them how to install solar on the houses. So, a lot of job trainees come out, and the youth corps is going to come out this time, and we're going to teach them all about solar electric systems. So, if you'd like to know a little bit more, we are having an orientation on July 30th at Allen Hancock College here, and I can give you a little bit more information about it. It's about, it's like an hour and a half to two hours long, but it will answer all of your questions, if you are curious on how we get the funding of what we do and the kind of stuff, the kind of projects that we work on. So, that's it. Thanks.
What time on the 30th?
Oh, it is going to be from 10 to noon, I believe.
Okay. And tell the folks your phone number, and if you have an email, tell them that, too.
Oh, yeah. My phone number is 805-769-9112. Also, my coworker Catalina, we can leave some flyers for you guys. If anyone else is kind of interested in qualifying to get solar on their house, we also have information for that as well. And so, you can just call or email that information, that contact, and I can actually, she can just forward the emails to me, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And if you'd be sure that the city clerk gets a copy.
Sure.
That way, if somebody asks, we'll have it all.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome to Lompoke.
Thank you.
And feel free to put some on the outside table, too. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor Lynn and members of the City Council. My name is Margaret Lau. I am the Director of the Environmental Training Center, which is a regional resource for largely businesses and industry. And I'm hosted at Allen Hancock College and supported by a grant from the California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office. I'm here as a tag team to Serena Bruce, whom you just heard from. I wanted to specifically let the good people of Lompoke know about this wonderful partnership, public-private partnership that we've enjoyed with Grid Alternatives. It was my great pleasure to serve as part of the Economic Development Committee for the City of Lompoke, and in that role, I came to know, of course, Teresa Gallivan, and linking one Steve Fernandez, who is the Executive Director of the Central Coast Grid Alternatives. Teresa was helping me to link up with your wonderful utilities coordinator, Mary Cammer. And in a meeting with Steve Fernandez, Mary Cammer, and myself, we thought, wouldn't this be a wonderful opportunity to bring solar PV installation at a very, very affordable, tremendously affordable rate to the City of Lompoke? We made that happen, and that was to the City of Lompoke's credit. We have offered three orientation, volunteer orientations at Allen Hancock College, and of course, the next one will be on July 30th. And the great thing about this particular installation on August 6th and 7th, it's a two-day installation project, we were able to train and get the resources and work with the Santa Barbara Youth Corps, and the corps members all happen to be here in the City of Lompoke. So, that solves a lot of problems. They want to learn how and be a part of the energy efficiency training programs and the opportunities for jobs, and it's an opportunity to benefit their hometown and their neighbor. So, anyway, it's my great pleasure to be here. Thank you again so much. You live in a wonderful community, and I just wanted to let you and remind you of that. So, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council members. By the way, with the installation on August 6th, a good time, if you, any of the members of the public or if city council members want to actually see the Santa Barbara Youth Corps members in actions, along with the team from Grid Alternatives, a good time probably would be about 1:00 on the first day of the installation, August 6th. And Grid Alternatives can be the access point to the exact project location. So, anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Margaret.
I live on Sheffield Drive in Lompoke. I'm here to invite you to the family day at the park, at Beatty Park, on July 27th. I belong to a committee called the Lompoke Valley Fallen Warriors Memorial, and we are, thank you to the City Council, February 5th. We were so excited, I was sitting here in the front row and almost did a yahoo when everyone approved the project. Our desire is to enhance the flagpole at Beatty Park and build a memorial to honor the 45 people that are on the list. We've worked with the Historical Society. The names date all the way back to World War I, but these are people that call Lompoke Valley home. The Historical Society helped us define Lompoke Valley, from Surf out to Drum Canyon, that little bridge, and from the top of Harris Grade down to Las Cruces, the school at 101. All of the hills, all of the Spanish rancheros, all of that is Lompoke Valley. And the history of the people that have lived here and called it home dates back to two people in World War I and 15 people in World War II that were killed in the line of duty. This is military. I'll leave some of these brochures on the table out front, and if you are interested, pick one up on your way out. We would like to invite people to come to the park on this Saturday as an awareness. It's an information day. We'll have people there that will help explain the memorial, the cost, and we're hoping to use Lompoke construction, Lompoke businesses. We would like to have everything done locally, and it should be a lot of fun. You can bring a picnic lunch, or there will be barbecue onsite, there'll be a bounce house, we'll have face painting, fingernail polishing for the little girls, there'll be an egg hunt out on the bluff west of the flagpole, we'll have an egg hunt. And I think we're working on a dino dig in the sandy area by the swings. We have live music that will be there with us, family kind of music. Can't think of anything else that I'm missing. Let's see. Girl Scouts will be there? No, sorry. Campfire Girls will be there with games, tables set up with games and little prizes for the kids. We'll have a Boy Scout troop that will be there with information and helping if anything needs to be assisted. We're at Old Town Market on Friday nights, and we have a booth down there, so come find out about the Fallen Warriors. We really can't do this without your support, and we want to build it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers.
Thank you, Lori. I apologize in advance, I'll be backpacking with the Boy Scouts that won't be there. Okay, who's next?
Good evening, Mayor Lynn and council. First off, I'd like to thank everybody for any reason that gets me over here and out of day 18 of triple digits in Fresno. So, Louis Lenny with TNT Fireworks would like to just, I have a couple of checks to present to you folks, and some of our organizations are here to thank you for allowing them to sell Safe and St. fireworks. First off, as I have, checks from three of the four organizations that as a requirement of the ordinance are providing you with 30 percent of their net profits. The fourth organization is actually school-based and can't write any checks until school comes back. So, Stacy, can I give these to you, or Mayor, whoever wants them?
Give them to Stacy.
Sooner or later, they'll get where they need to go, I'm sure.
She's going to give them to Brad. We're safe.
So, that is for three of the four. Obviously, we did not represent all six organizations in town. And then, I have also our check representing two-thirds of the wholesaler's fee to pay for police and fire protection on the 4th of July.
So, how did it go?
You know what? It was a little bit lighter than I would have expected, quite honestly, but I will tell you that our four organizations combined to wholesale, or I'll give retail figures, about $110,000 at retail. That's four out of the six. Obviously, I've had no common communication with our friends at Phantom, so I don't know how their two did. I'm sure that at some point in time, we'll be presenting the city with a complete financial analysis for everybody, so that you can get backup on what we're presenting. But tough year in the valley, I can tell you that much. We had cities down quite a bit. The heat killed us. I have not yet seen all the numbers for your closest neighbor, which would be Santa Maria up here. I'd be happy to provide that with you, for you at any time. I think all four groups that we dealt with had a positive, successful, profitable season. As I said, we have Lompoke High School, we have Gloria here that will give you a firsthand count of her experiences. And then, just one last thing, I would again like to publicly thank, thank the chief and battalion chief Hart, who, as I told chief Hart, this was clearly not what they would have liked to have been doing. They jumped in with everything they had, and I think that they did their very best to try and make the process as smooth for the residents and as safe for the residents here as they possibly could. So, I definitely appreciate that. I've worked with chiefs in a lot of different cities who are in the same position, who did not take that type of attitude, and there, I think that the results speak for themselves. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. I'm Gloria Tadigou, and I'm actually a parent volunteer at Lompoke High School. I've also been a member of this community for more than 40 years. I just wanted to thank you for actually voting in the fireworks. From my standpoint... From my standpoint, parents are always looking for an opportunity to fundraise for high school. As you know, our funds are limited, and we're representing the Lompoke baseball team, which didn't, haven't had uniforms in the last 12 years. So this was a great opportunity to have an opportunity to do a fundraiser. I want to thank the city for supporting us. Some of the City Council members came by our booth. Overall, we had a very positive response from the community. Everybody was very thankful that they didn't have to travel out of town to enjoy the 4th of July. They can stay at home with their families, keep the money in Lompoke, and I thought that was a good positive. I, for one, always went out of town because we couldn't do fireworks. So it was nice that we could stay home and keep our money in Lompoke, because I'm a real advocate about keeping money in town and not giving my money elsewhere. The only other comments I had for next year, I know there's going to be a Lotto every year, but us being new, I know the timelines were small or short for planning purposes. And it was a lot of stress personally to learn how to run a fireworks booth, everything that was entailed. And I would consider allowing us to do it, whoever had it the first year, go a two-year. Not that we're going to get to do it for two years, but in the future, let the groups do it for at least two years. It's a lot of work just for the one year. The only other thing is if an organization has a booth for the Flower Festival and they won a Lotto at the fireworks, they would have to make a choice to do Flower Festival or the fireworks booth. Again, we're limited on how much money we can make, and it just, it's nice to share the wealth. The other thing, we didn't mind sharing the 30% with the city. We know it's for the fireworks booth, but we're a nonprofit organization, and that 30% out of our profits was, to us, was a little bit high. It would have been nice maybe to do 15%, 20%. I don't know what other cities do, but for the first year, I thought 30% was kind of a little much, because we do all the, the parents running the booth do all the work. So not that we don't want to share or help our community, but I think 30% was a little stiff for us nonprofit organizations. The other thing was the ordinance. People wanted to know where they could do fireworks safely in the community. We didn't really have an answer. My recommendation was, call the fire department, ask them, you know, people live in apartments, where are they going to shoot the fireworks if they don't have a backyard or a driveway? So it'd be nice to maybe have an area, a park, maybe a school for people to do a safe fireworks. Overall, it was a positive opportunity. Lompoke baseball, again, thanks to the community, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once, going twice, gone. Okay, coming back to council. Okay, this evening, we have a long consent calendar, so I'm going to be rereading for a couple of minutes. We have approval expenditures, a payroll of 1.3 million, expense voucher of 558,000, expense voucher of 518,000. There's one check on there, 313940. To Smithy's Towing for $145,000, which I hereby abstain from. Electronic payments for June of 2013 of 3,164,000, manual checks of $10,000. Item number two, approval of the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between the City of Lompoke and the Lompoke Firefighters International Association, Local 1906, IAFF, for the period July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2015. Item number three, approval of the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, with the employees represented by the Lompoke Police Officers Association, the LPOA. Item number four, approval of the City of Lompoke Compensation Plan for Management, Supervisory, and Confidential, alias MSNC, employees, and the Compensation Plan for Unrepresented UAR Employees for the time period beginning July 1, 2013, and rescinding the Resolution Number 5741/11. Item number five, adopt Resolution Number 586413, delegating authority to execute Federal Transit Administration documents, and that affects who can sign on behalf of the council. Item number six, Federal Aviation Administration Apron Rehabilitation Grant Application, and that's an applicant, that's the use of FAA money that we receive each year to refurbish a portion of the airport, and we're required to make a 10% match, which is generally paid for exclusively from fuel sales at the airport, the profit on those. Item number seven, funding of, oops, sorry, number six, and stop. So, does anyone want to pull an item from consent? Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. In light of the information I was provided last Friday evening and the topic which was discussed this evening by Ms. Roger, it seems as though we need further discussion on consent calendar item number four. So I would like to pull and table that item for a future meeting to be discussed as an item. I'm not sure what procedurally we would need to do in order to do that.
We can pull that item for discussion, but we wouldn't necessarily table it till all of us have a discussion of it. So we'll pull item number four, and we'll take it up after the consent calendar. Any other item a council member would like to pull at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
No, sorry?
I'm not going to pull anything. I just want to make a comment. The other things on the agenda, on the consent calendar, the, for the firefighters and the police officers, I just want to let the public know that these two groups worked very, very well with the city in coming to a contract agreement very quickly. These two groups realizing it's been tough times for both the city and for them, worked with the city, accepted very, very, if you see in there, very, very minimal pay increases. I think one is a 1%, another is a 2%. And this is after six years of no raises, furloughs for both departments, and just a lot of hardships. So I just really want to publicly thank both the Firefighters Association and the police officers for working with the city and, for the city and also with you in trying to conserve the few funds that we had during the past six years and the fees, and the fees or funds in the future. So, thank you.
Is that a motion to approve the consent calendar?
That was a motion to approve the consent calendar. Thank you.
And a second.
I'll second it.
Hey, get as much as you can and when you can. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. And now, just to kind of keep all the balls in the same order, I'm going to move to item four that was pulled by Councilmember Costa. Councilmember Costa, do you have a question about it, or, you know, what are you thinking?
I do have a question, but I'm not sure if the correct staff is present to answer my question, so that's why I thought perhaps we should be provided some additional background and information and reconsider this item at a future meeting. My question primarily is if it was an oversight that the library employees were not included, or if it was deliberate? And if it was, why that was the case?
Maybe I did a little research on that, so let me kind of...
If Mr. Wilkie can answer, and Marilyn, I'd be more than happy to hear yours as well, but it sounds like Mr. Wilkie has an answer, perhaps?
Go ahead, Brad.
Just to be fairly simple about it, the comp plan for the library is separate from the comp plan for the city's MSNC and UNRIP, primarily because of the legal definition that it's not a, it's not a entity of the city because it's an entity of the state. So they adopted their plan back in June, and there's very, there's a comp plan that's adopted by resolution, so if they choose to mirror the city's resolution, they simply have to, the board or the trustees would have to just go back and adopt a new plan. So it wasn't omitted on purpose, it was just not, it's not an action that the council can approve, because it's not the council's compensation plan to approve.
Let me go a little further, because I spent a bunch of time figuring this all out. So the library, as has been mentioned, is managed and governed by the Library Board of Directors and is not governed by this council, and it's not supervised by the city administrator or the city staff. Now, we work together with them, and they, you know, they generally mirror what we do. In last, the last budget cycle, the library board had adopted the library employee compensation plan after the city adopted our compensation plan. So back in 1113, when that was going on, they waited till we adopted our plan, and then they adopted their plan. This year, the library board adopted their employee compensation plan in early June. So at that time, the city, as you'll remember, was still in union negotiations and trying to figure out what we were going to do. We hadn't, we hadn't gotten down that road yet. The city does not adopt its compensation plan for the city employees who aren't represented by the union generally until two of the, at least two of the union plans are done and two of them are on tonight's consent calendar, and sometimes when all three are done. So tonight, we adopted those two plans, and now we could go in another direction. So at this time, if the library board wanted to rescind their June plan and develop a new plan to match the city plan, that's something they could do. It wouldn't be within our purview. And then they have this evening asked us to provide the additional funding out of the AB 701 reserves that we have held. So if they wanted to match the city plan for unrepresented staff, which is typically what they do, they would need to, in the current furlough hours, provide a 1% cost of living increase, provide a 3.477% pay increase for the library staff, and change the pension rate from 2% employee paid contribution to 8% to the public employees' retirement system. And that's what that 3.477 compensates for, so it becomes a wash. And as council, as a former council member, now library board chairman Roger said, that would be an increase of about $17,648.52, which this council could approve, not tonight, we would have to have an agendized item, to use from the AB 702 reserve as a one-time fund and a one-time increase in the library's 2013 contribution from the city. So these are all one-time funds, as you know. So we would, we would agree to do this one-time fund for them that would put them on parity with all of the others. So there was another comment that came around to me about why isn't the city funding the library and the county is? So I just wanted to share a couple of figures there, because it just wasn't true. Then, in the current budget, the city has funded the library for $398,000 a year. We, at the top, we funded them at 440. The county at the top, back in '07, funded the library at $396,000 a year and dropped to $302,000, and they're now bringing theirs back up to 352,000, still substantially below the 398,000 we've maintained. And this wasn't anything the library board said, this was a comment I got out in the public, hey, why is the city so far behind the county? But really, the county is just now coming back and catching up to us. So during the lean budget years, the city reduced the library contribution by about 10%, and as you can see, the county reduced it by a great deal more. Additionally, as you will all recall on the council, the council allocated $300,000 two years ago for the library heating and air conditioning system, and we currently have allocated $650,000 for the library roof and $50,000 approximately for the bookshelf anchorage. So out of our federal funds, we've put $1 million into the library in the last four years. So just so everybody remembers, we're out there taking care of the library. To that end, I think, Joe, could we do a combined motion if we wanted to approve this and then agendize the library's request simultaneously?
Certainly.
Okay.
Let me go ahead and...
Yeah, let me get, let me get in here for comment. Go ahead.
Well, a couple of things. I'm going to support Councilmember Costa in doing it all as one unit. Something that was, I don't know if it was overlooked or not included, but we were unknown, it was unknown to us. I know the Board of Supervisors allotted money to the library to bring it up to 2010 funding, and I'd like to know if that funding is going to be used for improving the library or if we're going to go ahead and put that off into wages. There's too many questions in it. I think we ought to table the whole thing, put it on with the library and talk about it. I think August 20th would be a great day to do it.
Take mine. Go ahead, Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. I, I'm assuming we're going to have to ask for public comment. I know that prior library director Molly Daryl is present this evening. I don't know if she would like to speak, but I would just like to invite her to speak if she has anything to say at this time. But my confusion comes when it sounds like we're doing it a little backwards and we had done it in the past. So they, like you'd said, Marilyn, is that they would pass a compensation plan that would mirror the city's?
After we passed ours, which is what we would be doing tonight.
Okay, and so I would...
Just pass theirs first.
Just for a historical perspective, if Molly could give us some information, please?
To that point, I was told by the library director, Ashley Chavez, that she was advised that it would be good to go ahead and anticipate that we, the library would mirror whatever was approved for the other two employee groups that we are aligned with at the library. The reason for that, as some of you know, is that she was about to go on maternity leave, and she had a discussion with city administration, and she was advised that that would be a good idea. It was when we, she, again, on maternity leave, she received a letter that went to department heads from HR stating that these changes and improvements would be made, and she contacted the city and just to make sure that the library was included, and she was told no. So I think from what the Board of Trustees has said to me, they just wanted to make sure that as a council, you were aware that the library employees are certainly city employees. I personally have worked for the city for 20 years before my retirement, something I always filled out, a City of Lompoke employee, paid by the city, very proud to be a city employee, very proud of the many things that the city has allocated to do to improve our library. As far as county funding, the county did reduce the library funding by 15% at a time when they were doing that for other departments. They decided this year to restore that same level of funding. That has not happened in the case of the city, and I understand that it is a very difficult time for the city. At the time the furloughs were started, I actually had to miss the May meeting where the question was asked of the Board of Trustees president. At that time, Al Clark, the comment was made, we don't know what the library will do. So whether than imposing furloughs, which you couldn't really have the power to do, he said, we will just reduce the library budget by 10%. So that has been in place. That was maybe 40-something thousand to restore this funding that is coming to all the, to the other city departments, is the cost has been stated as $17,600. That's a long way from the 40,000 or whatever was taken away when other departments suffered many cutbacks and restraints, loss of department heads. Believe me, I was there and I was well aware, but it's only through sort of an arcane rule in the state code, which I think libraries should really work to change, that the library cannot be considered technically a city department. At the time, the state set up guidelines to fund public libraries, and that is also in the state code, and we all know what happened there. Library funding, if it were allocated at the level it is written in the state code, Lompoke would be receiving, I think, over $200,000 a year from the state. The library is receiving no funding from the state. So that is the situation we're in. Sorry, I went on too long there, but...
So, that's what I was looking for. What I mostly wanted to point out, thank you, Ms. Gerald, was that I don't want to have the library penalized because they submitted that prior to this agreement for something different, because they anticipated something different as far as what the compensation plan was going to be.
That's exactly right.
So, Mr. Wilkie, if you could tell us then, if we were to approve MSNC this evening, and then agendize this for future, would that take care of this issue? Or how should we, in your opinion, how would we go about this?
Well, except for the 8% pers contribution change, the board could retroactively apply the 1% back to when, wherever they choose to, and the 17,000 would cover that, if that's something the council considers as a contribution.
I think the question she's asking is, can we do what I suggested? Any reason that you see we couldn't do that?
I don't see any reason why we couldn't pass the resolution tonight and have the one for the library comp plan mirror it in timing and amount.
So, do we need to have a formalized action to state that, or?
Yes.
Councilmember Costa, yes, we can agendize this for your action, and it would be to approve the expenditure, the increase of the contribution allocation to the library by the 17,000.
That isn't necessarily, that can be a consent calendar item as well. Right.
Now, that's AB 702 money also, right?
Correct.
And what meeting date would that be for, city administrator? What meeting date would we agendize it for?
August 20th would be the meeting date.
Okay. All right. So, let me take a run of the motion. I move the staff recommendation for item four, and that we agendize for August 20th, the additional 17,000, whatever it is, in AB 702 money, which would then be passed to the library in a one-time, as a one-time, it's not a grant, what's the right word? Allocation, as a one-time allocation, and a second.
Would agendizing it require that it be on the agenda, or can we put that on the consent calendar?
It could just, that'd be up to them. It has to be on the agenda, but the city administrator would determine where it went.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Okay. Councilmember Lingle.
Just a comment. Again, I earlier complimented the firefighters and the police officers for their negotiating with the city, and I actually neglected, but the rest of the city staff did the same thing. They negotiated very well, very minimal increases, including, now the library's going to be included in that as well. So, I want to congratulate the entire city staff for working with the council, working with the city staff, on coming with this budget.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? That passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, let's take a five-minute stretch break, and then we'll come to item seven. Okay, now, we're going to come to item number seven, a discussion of funding for the victim advocate position at the Lompoc Police Department, requested by Councilmember Starbuck and Chief of Police Larry Ralston.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and citizens of Lompoc, I want to thank you all for some of the support that we've gotten lately from our community. Before I get into the advocacy program, but recently, we finished our bicycle criterion. The Police Foundation sponsored it, and the total net was about $2,000. It was lower than we had hoped, but it was a good start for our first year, and we're excited to do it. Today, we met, and we're starting to plan for the future. The other day, we graduated about 20 Citizens Academy graduates, and had a great group, and very excited to graduate that crew. And then, Chief Ladapow and I were able to swear in our new chaplains, and we have now seven chaplains that are police and fire chaplains for the city, and I've got a great group. One of them, Doug Connolly, led the prayer this afternoon, or this evening. So, that was a great thing to see happen. And lastly, our Special Olympics Car Show is scheduled for August the 10th at Ryan Park, and it's our cooperative event that we do, the Police Department with North County Special Olympics, and so we ask that you all come out and support Special Olympics that day. And with that, I'll get on to the victim advocacy program. This is a, what we're asking for is that the staff discuss whether to fund the in-house victims' advocate position at the City of Lompoc Police Department. And this was a cooperative grant funded between Lompoc Police and the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protective Center. And this is supposed to work. There we go. Back in 1994, the Violence Against Women Act was passed, but prior to that, 1990, 19, I'm sorry, 1998, we started a grant called the Domestic Violence Stop Grant. It's a violence against women reduction program that has effectively shown a collaborative effort to address domestic violence, stalking, dating violence, and sexual abuse through education, collaboration, and investigation, and how that can improve the perception and the relationship between the community and the police. Again, this was a grant that has been in place since 1998, funded by the VAWA. The advocate has worked directly with detectives to provide immediate services to victims of sexual assault, stalking, dating violence, and domestic abuse. And again, this program that we've had to grant for has been the only victim advocate-in-house police relationship in the county of Santa Barbara ever. Several agencies approached, but benefited from this collaborative approach included, of course, North County Rape Crisis, Domestic Violence Solutions, the District Attorney's Office, Zona SECA, Lompoc Valley Healthcare, Santa Barbara Rental Property Association, Lompoc Unified School District, those are just to name a few, but there are several The funding unfortunately ended at the end of the 2011 year, calendar year, and so we had this grant for about 13 years. The council graciously agreed to continue the funding through the end of the 2011-13 budget cycle. The current victim advocate has done an excellent job in this position, and services to our victims through this last year and a half period have continued unabated. So, the proposed cost to continue to fund this position, and these numbers came from Shannon at the North County Rape Crisis Office today, for salary and benefits, administrative costs, taxes, and overtime, a total of $47,416, or for a two-year cycle, $94,000 and change. And the other incidental cost that I have down there is each year, we prefer to send our advocate to a national conference, and we've done that in past years, and the cost of that is roughly $1,500. This money is not currently funded for the 13-15 budget cycle. Plans are in place currently that we're going to move forward without the position until directed otherwise. And North County, in doing that and moving forward, there are three components that we've had to collaborate with to make sure that we continue to provide the services for our survivors, victims in the City of Lompoc. The first would be the North County Rape Crisis. Child Protective Center will continue to provide services to our victims of abuse, as they have done so well in the years of existence. Our commitment to them continues to be strong, and it will not be affected in a negative way. Secondly, Domestic Violence Solutions has worked well in the City of Lompoc, and their divert team responds to domestic violence calls. And as a matter of fact, today, when I was talking on the phone to one of the divert advocates over the radio, one of our officers was asking for divert to respond to one of our calls. So, this does work, and what happens is a divert response will occur where the person, the victim, will get immediate service for helping that person to work through their domestic violence issues. And lastly, the District Attorney's Victim Assistance Program has a staff person in Lompoc. This person works closely with Lompoc Police Department detectives to ensure our victims receive the care necessary to work through the situations that they're dealing with. And DA Joyce Dudley and her staff are very committed to continuing this here in Lompoc. So, the conclusion would be funding this position would allow the Lompoc Police Department to continue to provide this enhanced service to our victims of crime in our community, and if the position is not funded, then the department will continue to refer victims to all these three groups, including North County Rape Crisis, and will continue to provide the best service that we possibly can. And with that, I'm open to questions.
Questions for the chief before we go to public comment? Councilmember Lingle.
Okay, so, don't read anything into my question. It's just a question. Okay, so, you said, if we choose not to fund it, you're going to move forward, and with the North County Rape Crisis Center, the Domestic Violence Solutions, the District Attorney's Office, Victims Assistance, victims will be taken care of?
That's correct. I assure you that we will make sure, as long as I am chief, that we will make sure our victims are taken care of in our city.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to wait for public comment then. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Anyone else before we open for public comment? Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. My assumption, there was an interesting word in here, and it's an interesting choice of words, and I'm going to ask you about that. In the conclusion, you say to provide enhanced services. As you know, most of the way the city's functioning is really on bare services at this point. So, why would you consider this an enhanced service?
Because we have the advocate working right inside of our police station, directly with our detectives. So, we can offer a quicker response, a more immediate response, when we have that person right there in our midst. The biggest difference would be that we would, without that person, we would have to make the phone call, depending on the time of day or night, you know, there would be some time of, some amount of delay. But primarily, the enhanced piece of it is having the advantage of that person right there in our midst.
Thanks, chief.
You're welcome.
And now, who would like to speak to us on this subject?
I wasn't going to speak unless I had to. I'm Sandy Healy. I've been a resident of Lompoc for 47 years, and my husband was a police officer, retired. I was a police officer for 26 years. Because of mobility issues, he can't be here tonight. When he heard this position was cut, or was not included in the budget, he was outraged. And he told me the story of the one time he brought a woman who had been the victim of a violent abuse, brought her to the police station, the victim's advocate was there, he took her into the victim's advocate, she spent time with the woman, and she, at the end of that time, he said she was a completely different woman. She came in broken, but then she became fixed. In fact, she actually hugged him. And many people find police officers intimidating. I know I do. But we need to put our money into people, and I think this is a good cause. Thank you.
Thank you. So, some of you are new to this meeting, so let me talk about the rules. We don't applaud, and we don't boo, except for those kinds of things that at the very beginning of the meeting that are all good news. Okay, so, I'm going to have to ask you to refrain from that. I know you're going to try it one more time before you think about what I said, but we just don't. Okay? At the end of this, maybe I'll ask everybody to stand up who's in support. Maybe that'll help a little too. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Kathy Smerschler. I'm the chairman of marketableu.org, and actually, we're here for two reasons tonight. One, to support the advocacy position.
Easy for you to say.
We believe that it's very important. We actually had a discussion in school, and unfortunately, some of my students had to leave because of the hour, and they have to be in the fields in the morning. But I brought them over here tonight. We canceled school. We brought the students over here tonight to see how the city council works, based on the way that their community at school works. And one of the things that we talked about was this issue tonight. And I actually, in my own way, explained what the position was, based on the information that I'd gathered. And we actually discussed this position, and you have to remember that some of our students are homeless, some of them are in shelters, some of them do have homes. Some of them have been victims of different kinds of crimes here in the city, and some of them have said nothing to anyone, because they're afraid of the police. It is my opinion and the opinion of my students, because we took a vote, and overwhelmingly, our students said to not fund this position would be a crime, because of the students that I talked to said that there are a lot of people in this town that are frankly afraid of the police, and this person would be a good way for these people to have somebody regular, normal, however you want to describe it, not in uniform, to talk to when there is a problem. I think the only other comment that I got from my students is that it would be nice if the person was bilingual, because that is another problem. With some of our students, they've said, well, you know, this happened, or that happened, but there's nobody for me to talk to. So, I just wanted you to know that Marketable U supports the advocacy, advocacy, okay, the position. It's getting late for me, too. We support the position as a school, and I do as an individual, and I know my students all do also. So, please consider funding this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anybody else? And if you want to be next, jump up and go over to that side of the room, so we can keep on going.
Win Clevenger, and I'm a Lompoc resident for 43 years, and I'm representing the American Association of University Women, the Lompoc Vandenberg Branch. This is a letter from our president. The membership of the Lompoc Vandenberg Branch of American Association of University Women supports the funding for the dedicated full-time position of victim's advocate. In the job description for the victim advocate, it lists the following responsibilities. Performs counseling, advocacy, and training services to include: counsels and advises victims; assists obtaining emergency sheltering of victims and children; assists with obtaining protection orders and victim compensation; transports to shelter, medical facility, court, and other services; assists with court appearances; provides training to police on domestic violence issues; provides education to the community; supervises part-time staff and volunteers; participates in task force committees. This demanding position calls for a full-time professional. Several years ago, one of our members, a woman in her 80s, was a victim of a serious assault. This attack left a strong, educated woman feeling vulnerable, and was a life-altering, traumatic experience. If our member was so negatively affected, just imagine how those without means, education, or support would feel. In the discussion provided by staff, it states that the grant under the National Violence Against Women Act was denied. Our organization advocated for- Our organization advocated for and hailed the reauthorization of the Violence Against Women Act in March of this year, and a search of the website shows the expanded categories available for these VAWA grants. AAUW has, as its priority, issued support of the VAWA legislation, and our organization was represented when President Obama signed the expanded VAWA into law. We urge staff to reapply for the grant, and our organization would support any such effort. Lompoc-Vanderburgh Branch, AAUW, with its 95 Lompoc area members, agrees with the staff conclusion. Funding this position would allow the Lompoc Police Department to provide enhanced services to victims of crime in our community. Your number-one priority is public safety. Surely, this position supports that priority, especially for the most vulnerable in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And who’s next?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I’m Pam Wall, local resident. I’m requesting your support of Councilmember Starbucks’ request for funding the victim advocate position that just ended. I was going to ask everybody to stand that’s here supporting this, but the mayor’s promised to do that at the end, so I’ll let him have that honor. If he forgets, you do it anyway. I hope, and I’m sure you’ve all read Ron Thinks’ commentary in the Lompoc Record today. I hope everybody got the chance to read that, because I’ve talked to many people, and there are way too many people in the community that were not even aware this position existed, or the benefits that she provided to these victims. He clearly explained in great detail the benefits of funding the victim advocate position and the critical support she provides to victims of domestic and sexual violence. Unfortunately, too many of these victims are children. These crimes are not unique to females. Males are impacted, too. According to the statistics, six of 10 females and four of 10 males will be impacted by these crimes in their lifetime. And as I said too many times, that’s as children. Research suggests that children who are supported when they disclose abuse or when the victimization comes to light, they heal more quickly, and they have supportive family response, and professional intervention can help to heal child victims and their families. The victim advocate connects the victim and family to all services needed. No other support organization has the time or manpower to walk a victim through the complicated process and get them the help that they need. Nor can they dedicate the time needed to build the trust and confidence of the victims needed to get them through this process, including through to prosecution, and they do help the police department in that regard. It is very critical to have this person with them all the way through, somebody they can trust and build that confidence in, to give them the strength to follow through. It is very difficult to break the chains of domestic violence. The city passed an ordinance last year that all but eliminated housing for sex offenders in this community. Sex offenders by law can register as a transient. I checked Megan’s Law. A few days ago, in Lompoc, had 10 sex offenders listed as transients, and three of those were in violation of their registration requirements. They need to register every 30 days. Some sex offenders are not subject to having addresses disclosed, and there are 18 offender exclusions with no addresses listed, and one is in violation of their registration requirement. The public has no way of knowing where any of these offenders are at any time. And I would imagine the police department has trouble keeping up with the ones who continually list as transient. And maybe they are living somewhere, but they list as transient. Maybe they’re living next door to you. Today, I checked, and there was one offender with an address listed in violation of registration requirements, so who knows if that address is even still valid, and the site is updated daily. When this issue came up last year, the council voted unanimously in favor of this position, and I would hope that you would do so again this year. Councilmember Costa, last year, made note when giving her approval for funding from the General Fund Reserves, stating, “Understanding that this only goes to 2013, and we do need a long-term contingency plan for this.” And we do. Well, that has not happened, and now we’re past the 11th hour. The position has ended. We need to restore the position and fund it in the manner it has always been, through the Rape Crisis Center with the advocate located physically with the police department. This is the most ideal situation. Every police force would like to have this, and that was pointed out last year by the chief, who was a captain last year. I’m very happy to be in Lompoc with this set up this way. So I’ll leave you with a word spoken by Richard Kravas, Executive Director, Domestic Violence Solution, last year. I think it can be accomplished, although it might take a level of commitment that runs against certain of your financial insecurities. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, please.
My name’s Kim Matulis, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of our victim’s advocate program. When we fail to listen to crime victims, we’re in direct conflict with the very premise that our justice system was founded upon: fair, swift, and equal justice, with punishments that are consistent with the crime and helpful to victims’ healing. Forums such as this enable victims and survivors to be heard. And again, so I thank you. Not only do victims suffer detrimental consequences of the crime, but the impact carries over into extended families and our communities. The criminal system is intimidating and complex. We must have policies that reflect an attitude that our justice system does not exist despite its victims, but rather, it exists because of them. A victim’s advocate is one that’s policy. When I first heard that our Lompoc advocate might be cut, I was really sad. Then I saw an appeal for people to come forward and tell you what this means to our community. I thought, “Oh, God, I don’t want to think about all that again. I haven’t thought about that in a long time.” But, you know, how selfish and unfair would that be, I thought, to other people who could benefit as much as I did? So I’m here, and instead of formulating a formal speech, complete with supporting statistics and whatnot, I think it’s best to tell you what my advocate did for me. After leaving a domestic violence situation, my former husband stalked. This began in the late 1990s, when stalking and terrorist threats weren’t even a crime. I cannot begin to tell you what a nasty crime stalking is. My front lawn was doused with gasoline, my mail was stolen, he would find ways to enter my house and wait for me to come home, say hello. He rented a house down the street from me, and he’d sit out on the front, on his driveway, drinking beer, watching my house, taking pictures, I don’t know what of. I was selling a car, and I was told by a prospective buyer that the fuel injectors had been smashed, and that if I had driven it, I probably would have been blown up. One morning, while having coffee with my best friend, my answering machine went off. It turns out, he had taken our kids shopping and used them to find the kind of answering machine that I had. That way, he could figure out how to access my messages. My pets were killed. He violated visitation orders and child support orders and virtually any authority as far as being conducive to peace. There was going to be no peace. He made many death threats. His favorite was to send me bullets with my name carved in them. This went on for about four years. I thought it was a matter of time before he was going to kill me. I really thought he was gonna kill me. So I had, and there was nothing I could do about it. I had attempted to utilize the justice system, but on my own, with no avail. So one weekend, I formulated an email about my situation, and I wanted everybody who read it to know that I would not commit suicide, and that if I ended up dead, it was not an accident, and it was not a suicide, and that he was probably guilty. I emailed it to every contact I could find after Googling domestic violence. Well, I get this phone call, and then I went about my daily life. This life had become normal for me. And then I get a phone call from the LPD advocate. Somehow, it got forwarded to her. It was a message on my voicemail. I didn’t answer my phone calls. And I responded to her, and she wanted me to come down. She was at the police station, and there was a detective there. I will tell you, if it wasn’t for her, I would have ran. This would have never gone any farther. Everything opened up from there. She was beside me through a subsequent arrest. The next time, he sent bullets with my name on them, she was gonna have none of it. He was arrested and eventually convicted and tried of stalking. The behavior stopped. This was a number of years ago. I was able to launch a career in teaching, live in this community, and it was not only good for me, but it was good for him, because his behavior has considerably changed. Formal probation, 10-year restraining order, all of that changed his life, too. I really don’t know if it wasn’t for this advocate, if I would be here today, and he would be in prison, and our kids would have been in the foster care system. She was by me while I testified at the trial. As a matter of fact, I almost failed the night before. He called the police and had them show up at my house. He wanted the kids taken into foster care for the duration of the trial. That was to stop me from testifying. That’s what that was. Well, she wasn’t gonna have any of that either. She stepped in and intervened on that one as well. She was crucial and changed my life forever, and I want everybody and you guys to know that. Because as a community, I really think that we have to recognize that crime victims should be granted the rights that just leave along to them, rights that are no less than those afforded offenders. And I really hope, I sincerely hope that this council will recognize a victim’s advocate is one of those rights, and I was very fortunate to have one.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Zoe Tinsley. I’ve lived here for about 12 years. My parents live here as well, and my children. And I am here because I am also a victim of domestic violence, and without my victim advocate, I might have lost my child. And I didn’t...
Slow down, take a breath.
It’s always hard to talk about in front of people, but that’s why I wanted to come, because Sabrina is the only person that actually... She gave me something that nobody else gave me, and that’s, she listened to me, and she talked to me, and she answered my phone calls and my emails, and please don’t take this disrespectfully, but she also didn’t treat me the same way that the police did, even though, even though my ex was convicted of domestic violence. He’s still, even with Ms. Ross’s help, to this day, still stalks me to some degree, although because of her testifying and because of the orders that we have in place now, things are a lot, lot better. And with her testifying on the stand and being so articulate, I think that he was able to see that it wasn’t just me telling him that he had a problem, that if somebody else could see that he had a problem, that maybe he would start to get help, and he has. And I could only make it a better father for our daughter, but until then, I know that she’s not with him as much as she could have been if it hadn’t been for Sabrina. And I really think that the judge had been unhappy with me and my ex, and thinking that we were just fighting with each other, and with Sabrina’s testimony, and with him being able to see the emails, and being able to see Ms. Ross actually went through all of the emails, because he used to send me novels, novels, and telling me how awful I was and how awful my family was. And she went through and labeled everything and told me what was bribery, what was harassment, and I was able to take that and show that to the judge, and he was able to see that as well. And without her, I don’t know if I could have articulated that and done that. And there’s no way she should lose her job, because, I mean, like I said, even though he was convicted, every time I would call the police to try and talk about a violation, even when he was on probation, they always were, eh, well, we don’t really like to get involved in these civil manners, and eh, well, you know, did he really violate? I mean, and these emails, eh, just kind of seems like he wants to see his kid, and he wasn’t supposed to harass me at all, it was part of his probation, and the Lompoc Police looked at everything, and they didn’t think that it was still harassment, and Ms. Ross was able to help me show that it was, and unfortunately, he got off probation before that happened. But because of everything, he is getting some help now, and it really is because of her. And having her answer my phone calls and answer my emails and actually talk to me and make me feel like I wasn’t crazy, and that I was important, and coming to my home and visiting me and my family, I mean, the police, they never treated me like that, and nobody else in the other victim’s advocate programs in Santa Maria ever treated me like that. She is the only one that ever did. And she is wonderful, and there’s no way that you could ever even find anybody better. So you should be so, so lucky that you even have her to fill this position, because I’m sure that there’s nobody better than her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name’s Doug Conley, and I want to support what our chief said. I am one of the 20 that just graduated from the Lompoc Police Academy, Citizens Academy class. My eyes were opened after 13 weeks of working with the police department, and especially the part that he said, that even if you do not fund this program, they’re gonna keep doing what they’ve been doing. And I highly respect him for that. During our class, I was made aware of the SWAT team, of which protects and keeps our community safe, and they go through 80 hours of training, and they get no additional pay for this, they get no additional insurance for this, no additional coverage. They simply do it to keep us safe. And I understand what the chief is saying, that if it’s not funded, we cannot turn these people away. They need to be taken care of. And I know that we had all the ladies up here, but I was subject to this kind of abuse as a child, and it would have been really good if there would have been somewhere where I could have gone as a child. Because you see, these different ones that are speaking, it never really ends. They have to live with this the rest of their life. And my perpetrator ended up stabbed to death in an alley, and it took me a long time to get over the joy of him being stabbed to death because of the pain that he brought to me and I’ve had to live with for these 50-plus years. And so, when the chief says that he’s going to keep doing, these people, even without the funding, they have a need. They’re going to have to be taken care of. We can’t just say, “There’s no money, so you’re on your own.” So I ask, in their behalf, that this is serious, and that we need to support them.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers and general public, I’m Charles Blair, retired Air Force surgeon. I’ve been a resident of the Lompoc Valley in Vanderburgh Village since August of 94. I really support continuing funding of this victim support, and with particular attention to the Rape Crisis Center. Rape and other, so this is not a gender, this is not a political issue. In my opinion, this is a human rights and public safety issue, that these may be able to take care of. If you recall, in New York, there was a boy that was, I believe Puerto Rican, if I’m not mistaken, was sodomized by the police with a broom handle, wound up with a perforated colon. I’m a retired physician, and although I’ve not been directly involved with evaluation of rape and assault cases, I’ve read the protocol, and the examination photographs, testimony, and examinations necessary to get the evidence can be very intrusive. And I really applaud people like Shannon Row... And I really applaud people like Shannon Rose, Shannon Rose Chavez, yeah, Shannon Rose Chavez, for her with the Rape North County Rape Crisis Center in supporting this. As I say, the, the church I belong to, Valley of the Flowers, awarded her the Second Annual Peace Prize for the 2012, in support of that. Again, I had more things I was going to say, but I think a lot of people have said that as well. I want to remind you that a budget is a moral document, a moral statement. The budget you put is where, is where you put your interests and all that, and I really support Councilman Starbuck, and, and though, and support those that supported bringing this to public attention. Now, I want to close with a quotation from the Book of Matthew 6:21. Where your treasure is, there also is your heart. And I sincerely hope that your heart is in support, putting your money where your mouth is and supporting this issue. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilpeople. My name is Barbara Hold. I'm a citizen of Lompoc. I've been very active within the nonprofit world in the last few years, I'm sure as you all are well aware. And I was here before we had the victim advocate. And what they've done since they came, they act more as a conduit, so that they, so a person who ends up with the police department or whatever it might be, has somebody who's interested in them and them alone. They're not diverted with every, every other thing. And if you look at it, yes, we have some great agencies, you have Domestic Violence Solutions, the North County Rape Crisis Center, the Victim's Advocate and all of that, but they all have specialized type of things that they do, but this person takes them as an individual and can take them to where they need to go, not where the agency thinks they should go. So, that's very short, but I think you know, I feel, I'm very sincere when I say, I think this victim advocate should be part of your budget, and it shouldn't be just for a one-time thing.
Thank you, Barbara. Who else? And if you want to speak, kind of move this way so we can move along. No, not you, the next person after you, you were doing fine.
Councilman, my name is Allison Wales. I spoke before. If you remember correctly, I was fortunate to be the second victim advocate under this wonderful grant. I wanted to clarify a few things. When the chief said, you know, enhanced services, there was a question of what that means and why should that be special? There's a lot of layers to that word, honestly, and what this position does. The reality of it is, is that Domestic Violence Solutions and the Rape Crisis Center and every advocate in this city will continue to do above and beyond, because that's what they do. But also, the reality of it is, is just two nights ago, the center got a call and said, hey, this was an assault, could you please call this victim, after the fact? We can't get a hold of that victim. We probably never will. She probably will never come into my office and receive the help that she needs until she's victimized again, because we were not there. And the reality of it is, as the Lompoc victim advocate, when you call and say, hey, I'm the Lompoc victim advocate, can you come down and talk to us? Can we have a communication? Because it's coming from the police department, it puts a little power behind it, because that's the last thing that a lot of victims want sometimes, is an advocate. They don't want another person there. But because it's the police department, they kind of feel obligated at times. Some say, forget it, but a lot of times, they say, okay, I guess I have to show up because it's the department. So, when you say enhanced, that's a little bit of it, on my perspective, as far as helping victims and being able to be there. The second is, they're there to listen, and even though many of you are sitting here and writing and doing things and saying, oh, yes, I'm listening, that victim will not feel that they're being listened to. Our job is to help, talk to, make it softer for the department, for the victim, in making something that is very wrong, a little right. And the thing is, it'll never be just enough, enough justice or enough rightness to it. This is an important position, whoever holds this position, and I hope you will consider deeply finding a way to fund it. It is needed and important in this community. Thanks.
My name is John McReynolds. I used to work for the Lompoc Record, some of you may remember that. Five years ago, I think, maybe six, I did a story for the record on domestic violence, and I did, I interviewed Shannon and Chief Dabney and probably a dozen people for that story. I had no knowledge of all that you've heard here, none. It never touched me, and I also researched the census tracts, the numbers that are public knowledge of cases of domestic violence. And I was shocked, frankly. I mean, I've lived here since 1977, I had no idea that we had numbers like that, and that was with what the chief's calling the enhanced service. So, I guess I just have to conclude that that, if they were that bad with the service, what would they be without it, even with the chief's best efforts? So, I would urge you to try to find some way to keep it. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Powers. I'm a citizen of Lompoc, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, for allowing me to speak. I am an employee of the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, and I am also a survivor of sexual assault and domestic violence. I'm going to go through the job titles at the Rape Crisis Center. We have the executive director, associate director, finance human resource director, which is myself. We have counseling and volunteer services coordinator. We have two community outreach presenters, a school program coordinator, two education presenters, and a special events coordinator. Did I say victim advocate? No, I did not. That's extra. I, I said this before when I was here a couple of weeks ago, I don't want to keep going on and on, and you talk about an enhanced position? Of course, it's an enhanced thing. That's why we're doing it. We want to provide enhanced services for our citizens. I can't be there except in immediate crisis to advocate for the survivors. I can't. I'm busy. I'm finance human resource director. We have a victim advocate. We have had other victim advocates. We need a victim advocate. We have got to provide the services. There are no people, okay, we've got domestic violence, we've got rape crisis, what about survivors of somebody who's been murdered? Where's the advocate for that? We've got murders in Lompoc. We've got gang violence in Lompoc. We've got problems in Lompoc. We need this position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lynn and councilmembers. I'm Shannon Chavez, I'm with the exec, the executive director of the Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. I think you've had, I wasn't planning to speak, because I felt like people who came tonight and who spoke a few weeks ago would do a good job at letting you know what this position means to the community, and I can see that tonight, they really have done that. This isn't about saving a job, this is about potentially saving a life, and you've seen that with some of the speakers tonight. And as Karen just said, this enhanced service is kind of a misnomer, because it is a basic service that these people deserve. We can't provide that. We can provide very crisis-oriented services, but we have our own positions. We do this, the advocacy on the side. Our volunteers do this on the side. They're all busy people. This position is a professional 40-hour position, above, more than 40-hour position, because they're on call. This is what that position does only, provide services to survivors and to their family members of any crime, any violent crime, murder, sexual assault, domestic violence, gang violence. There will be people that will fall between the cracks, and there will be a lot of people that fall between the cracks if this position is not funded. And I hope that you will see the wisdom that has come to you tonight from all the various speakers, from their perspective, how they have seen the importance of this position, and I hope that you will continue it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance. Closing oral communication, and now, everyone that's here in support of the grant, please stand up and raise your hand. Ah, ah, ah. Ah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to add nine people to that vote. Unfortunately, they had voted a few to the left.
Okay, thank you.
I was over here to start.
All right, thank you. Okay, coming back to the council for discussion. Dirk, this is your item, would you like to begin?
Well, I'd like to thank some of the people that came out and spoke. I mean, some of these stories are, I know they were hard, but I think maybe hard times, desperate measures. The hidden statistics are what always get me on this, and the fact that the number of under 18 murders that happened in this city last year, which is unknown, everybody can recall one or two, but I can tell you, there were seven. The confidentiality in this is what makes this such an invisible position, and why it's really basically unknown unless you become one of the statistics. The other statistic, I always like numbers, is if we didn't have it, what do we have at the end? But we have an advocate, what did we prevent? It's unknown, but I'm not really a gambler either, and I think that having an advocate is going to someday save a life and probably prevent a lot of heartache for families and other people down the road. In my mind, I'm going to put it in a very simple thing, we can give an accused rapist a lawyer, but we can't give a victim an advocate. I don't know, I just felt strongly about it, I wanted to bring it up, I fully support it, I hope the council will lean my way on it. Thank you.
Councilor Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I wanted to thank everybody for coming this evening. Of course, it is a very sensitive subject, and so giving us that insight into your personal lives is very valuable. Thank you for taking the time, all of you, whether you work in the field or have experienced something that we've heard this evening. In particular, the AAUW, a group that I respect, some really great information here, I want to say. I was looking online, and I did see that there was a House Passage of the Reauthorization of the Violence Against Women's Act, and with that comes quite a bit of grant potential and possibilities. So, I started looking through some of those, one of which is Legal Assistance for Victims' Grant Program, which may not fit perfectly, I'm not sure what the title of our grant was in particular, but it seems like there may be some overlap. Now, unfortunately, the 2013 cycle is closed and they reopen in September, so that's sort of, that's the struggle, right? So, I feel like if, if we knew confidently that, or somewhat confidently, that this was going to be bridge funding, I would, there's no question in my mind that we would continue this, and that I would have been provided with a contingency plan that I did not receive to fund this in future years. What I don't want this to be is funding for, you know, and as silly as it sounds, the bridge to nowhere, right? So, we have this funding that we continue for a year, and then what do we do next year? That's the struggle that I'm having with this. You know, it's hard, because I feel like public safety is priority number two, and sometimes we do have to put our money where our mouth is, and maybe this is one of those instances, but after we commit to one fiscal year, two fiscal years, you know, what then? So, that's, that's the struggle that I'm having. For me, there is absolutely no question of the quality of service being provided, no question. There's no questions of the importance of this position, enhanced or not, I was just curious about that word. That, again, that to me is no question. It's interesting, somebody from the public, the executive director of the Rape Crisis Center stated, it's not saving a job, it's saving a life, and I think that that is very important to consider when we're discussing this, but I want to be sure that we're not taking a short-term solution that we can't sustain. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't know which one of you's next. Councilor Homeville.
Very interesting tonight, and I, I agree with the premise and all of it. In 1980, the first time I ran into something like this on, on board of supervisors, and that was the battered women, and helped bring that shelter, I got the money to help build the first shelter in Lompoc in the, in the 80s. And the problem is, what we see here tonight is that the general public don't realize this. They don't see, they can't believe anybody would hit a kid, or hit a woman, or hit a man, whatever it is, that the general public doesn't see that. But seeing you here tonight and getting it out so people understand what's going on, I think it's fantastic, and the way the process. I think the way it works from the police department, we're going to have to find the money to make it, and what I'm real pleased about is, I was on the council that initiated it the first time in 1998, and I hate to lose it again. And I think we can, Larry's done an excellent job within the department, and the victim advocate is, the idea of what we've heard tonight as the victim, they can sit down and talk with them, and they believe in the advocate. There is this concern about police, and it, and it's not their fault, it's just how it's got there. I remember, I had personal acknowledgement that we had a couple staying at the ranch in one of the houses, and they would have a little trouble drinking at times, and then he'd get mad, and he'd beat the heck out of his wife, and so Dad finally kicked him off the ranch, but the police would come out, they'd take him to town, put him in a hotel room, till he sobered up, and then he'd come back. Now, this is in the 70s, and so you've seen that, and you probably all have, how many in this audience had even heard the extent that some of these people would go? You just don't believe, it's so hard to believe that anybody would do that to another person. And I'm, I'm very pleased to see what the comments were tonight, in that the victim advocate position is an excellent one, it works, they can talk to them, they feel comfortable with that person, and I think that's, we're going to have to find a way that we can fund it. And then, once we get it done now, is how we're going to fund it in the future and go after grants or whatever it's going to take.
Councilor Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Ralston, one more question for you, you can stay there. You said, if we don't approve this funding, this, the protection will go on. How much time, I know this is going to be just a ballpark figure, but try to do the best you can, how much additional time do your officers, will your officers have to spend if we do not have a, an advocate position on an annual basis?
You know, it's hard to say, primarily because they would be with the victim until they were able to get a, an advocate to respond, so it could be, could be hours in some cases, going to a SART exam, something like that, having to be with the survivor can be, like I said, it could be hours. Sometimes it already is hours, even with the advocate.
Just, I mean, and I, I thank you for that, but I know it's almost impossible, just on an annual basis, approximately how many officer hours, additional officer hours would be involved in it?
You know, it's, again, that's a hard one to put my finger on, hundreds of hours, probably.
Okay. What I'm trying to get at is, this could possibly be saving the city some money, funding this position, taking, right now, we're taking police officers off the street to provide the services that this advocate is. You know, you can take the number of hours, whatever it would really be, hundreds, maybe even thousands of hours, I don't know, times the cost of the police officer, and then that police officer's not on the street protecting your property. So, I, it could be looked at as possibly saving money. A couple points that were brought up, both Councilmember Costa and Councilmember Humdol said, what's happening in the future? So, I'd like to, if someone is out there, if this position is approved tonight, or even if it is approved, someone out there looking at some of these grant fundings for, when they become available, I think you said in September? The other thing was mentioned that we do not have anyone that The other thing was mentioned, that we do not have anyone that is bilingual. We may be able, if this is funded, or even if it isn't, we may be able to get a volunteer to help the victims, victim, victims' advocate that is bilingual. I think that's an important thing. The, the point about saving a life, I mean, it's, with $94,000 for two years, what is a life worth? Many people have asked me, you know, "Bob, we're the only city in Santa Barbara County that has this position, so why," they all get along with it, "Why do we need it here?" And it is a valid question. I've asked myself that many times. I think the thing I come up with right now is that maybe it's because Lompoc is a better We all know we're better. We all love and like Lompoc, and I think it's probably because we are a better place than maybe some of the other cities. Yeah, I really did come into this meeting tonight, I know I had a lot of lobbying going on during the past couple of weeks, and I would not commit. I came into the meeting tonight really with an open mind, and the speakers that came forward and spoke, let me tell you, it tore my heart out, so. I don't know how I could not vote for supporting this position, so. Thank, everyone that spoke tonight, thank you very much.
Okay, so let me explain the problem. I believe everything I said when we funded this last time. I still believe it today. I agree with Councilmember Lingle, we are a better place. And if this was February, it wouldn't even be a matter of discussion. I would just say, "Yes, let's go do this." But it's a little harder now, and I want to explain why. And today, I did a little, little rough number crunching, just so all of you would understand why we're struggling with this a lot harder than you are, and we're trying to figure out a way. We passed a balanced budget, and we're going to use some long-term reserves that we've had sitting around to fund some one-time fill-ins for our city employees who've been on furloughs and haven't had a pay raise in forever. So basically, had a five percent pay cut, and then the economy took away seven and a half percent, and then their medical costs went up another ten percent. And I know we all deal with this. But the difficulty that we have going forward is we have three compounding things that are happening, happening to us, and it isn't going to affect us in this year or the next year of our budget, but in the following two, two periods, we have some really big numbers. And I want to share them with you so you understand what we already know up here, and why we're sitting here struggling with this. The current contracts that we are going to fund for our various employee units are being funded with one-time money. That means we have the money now, but we don't have it going forward. So in the 2015-17 budget, there will be a $1.6 million amount that we're going to have to fill. Right now, we have both some additional police officers and some additional fire personnel on grants, but those grants start to run out in 1517, and if we want to keep those additional officers and firefighters, we have a $1.2 million backfill that we will need to be. And then, our friends at the state of California, in their infinite wisdom, have raised our pension costs by somewhere between sixty and seventy percent, and beginning in the, and we, when we picked up $600,000 of it in this budget cycle, and it's going to go up another $900,000 in the 1517 cycle. And that means that we will have $3.7 million that we need to come up with. Now, to put it in perspective, our entire city budget is $28 million for the general fund. So that's 3.7 million, and in the 1719 budget, it gets a little worse, it's 4.2 million. Now, the, the city isn't like the state, and we can't go steal money from someone else. We have to have a balanced budget. We can't borrow. We have to live within our means, so we have ways by which we can improve this. And as you all know, economic development and jobs are our number-one objective, and up until February, I had a pretty big smile on my face because we were having positive results, and we were seeing some increases in property tax because new houses are being built and bought. We were seeing sales tax growth, largely thanks to all of you who did that, and we're going to talk about it some more tonight, to try to get some more of our friends and neighbors on board. And unfortunately, because of the economy, we had a little decrease in our transient occupancy tax, alias bed tax, which people that stay in motels or long-term facilities pay. And then, as a council, realizing that we had issues, we have been working on reducing costs for a number of years, and when you listened to Molly earlier, two years, in the prior budget, so three years ago, we made some very, very large cuts, including eliminating a number of city positions. And so the easy things are gone there, but we're out looking for the not-so-easy ones now. And then the very last thing at the end of the list is, we're going to ask you all to increase your taxes if we can't make this work out any other way. So to put it in perspective, I want to talk about what that $3.7 million will mean in 1517, if we don't have these increases in revenue, or we don't increase your taxes if we can't have the increases in revenue. What does $3.7 million mean? What would we have to cut? And I'm not saying these are the things we're going to do, I just want you to understand how serious this is, so you understand why we're all struggling with this. So it would be 100% of our money to the library, which represents half of their funding. It would be 100% of the funding to the recreation department, which would include the pool and the community center. And it would be 80% of the money that pays for parks and landscaping in all of our city facilities. I'm not sure what we would do for 20%, but that would be $3.8 million, so slightly more than what we're looking at in 1517. I have absolute faith that because of the path that we're on in economic development, we're going to, we're going to be gaining ground. We have new businesses coming. You heard about a restaurant tonight, that's a small one. There's a very large announcement in the near future that'll be pretty exciting. But I'm scared to death of this situation, I'm scared to death, as your mayor, of having to say, "You know what? We're going to have to cut this, this, and this, because these things we can't cut." And so, from my standpoint, to go forward with this $100,000 expense, I think we, as a council, need to go back and look at what we're going to cut that's $100,000, so that we don't take it out of reserves. And ladies and gentlemen, that's what has all of us struggling with this. So we understand what it is that you want, and we've all spoken in favor of this in the past, but I'm just not in favor of dipping into our reserves, because I see this problem in two years and in four years. So I would ask the council for their thoughts on taking a look at, asking staff to see what else we could remove to fund this, from the left.
Thank you, Marilyn. And I, I think that's part of the reason why, and Chief Ralston, I, I completely understand, coming from your perspective, why it would be a mixed bag for you, because to completely jump on board with funding this might threaten funding of something else that you find critical to your department. And I understand that that would be very frightening as a chief to present it that way, and so I understand the reason it was presented in the manner in which it was. Marilyn, I agree with you. Long-term planning has really been where we've all stood in regards to city finances up till this point, not dipping into reserves, cutting where we need to, saving where we need to. And so that's the struggle that I have with this. I am thinking, however, that there is a middle ground in that this is, you can fund per year instead of two-year cycles, and perhaps what we need to consider is, is a one-year funding, which would not exceed $50,000, and not the full two-year funding. In order to allow time for this position to work with the police department, to apply for grant funding, understanding that I would be making the promise this evening that if grant funding was not received, I would not vote to continue funding at that time. Lucky for the department, it would be campaign season this time next year, so you might actually get it to continue, but all of us will be here in a year from now, and that's what I, I think we all need to be held accountable for our decision. So perhaps if we look at it that way, a year extension of the position funding, not to exceed $50,000, in order to, and I know it's going to take some of that advocates' time away from victims, which is where it needs to go, but when we look at long-term funding, for me, that's the only option I see viable at this time. So I just want to put that out on the table for discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Homdahl?
I agree with what Councilman Cast, what she got through saying. The thing is that, is we go back to what happens if we don't have there, what it does take out of, take the police department out of that division. And, and I think one of you all brought up the idea, "Why do we have it, nobody else does?" Because it has worked. So I think if we can look at it, do a budget check, do, guarantee for the first year, and then we've got a year to work on, and if these new programs keep coming in like we're hoping to, and then Hancock College gets itself opened up, there'll be a lot of changes within the year, so that's, I don't have any problem going back and doing a workshop study on just this one issue, how to fund it, either for one year, two years.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, obviously, I'm all for funding it, and doing a little online homework, there are many, many grants available for this. Surprised to hear me say "online homework." But, I mean, even Avon offered a grant. There, I don't want to say that there's endless opportunities, but I think that as a city, we could apply ourselves, to apply for these grants, and probably get this position funded after the 15 budget cycle by grants.
Councilmember Lingle?
Who's going to be applying for these grants? You know, that's, I mean, so the thing is, you know, it, yes, it'd be great to say, "Okay, we'll fund it for a year, we'll apply for these grants, we'll get the grants, and then we're going to be good." But who's going to be applying for the grants? Councilmember Starbuck seems to be computer literate, so no.
That's right up my alley.
Well, Marilyn, you know, everything you said is, is true. We've been struggling for, you know, many of us, two years, myself for four years, trying to keep this budget balanced. We haven't dipped into the reserves. But the amount we're talking about right now, $40,000 a year compared to the $4.7 million that we're going to be, it's important money. Every dollar's important, but it seems to me that, and it seems to the victims out there, that we're really being, as the cliche is, pound foolish and penny, penny smart and pound, pound foolish, whatever it is, you know. So I don't know who's going to apply for these grants. I don't, we don't have anyone lined up. I'd be in favor of approving the two-year position right now, if necessary, using reserve money. We have done in the past, not this council, the councils in the past, we have used reserves. Reserves are there for a purpose now. I know the, we have to worry about when we do have the $4.7 million, and if the mayor's not successful with this, we may have to come up with that. But right now, I'd be in favor of approving the full two-year position for the victims' advocate, and, because I don't see where we're going to be getting the grants, even to write, still work on the grants. I mean, go ahead and start getting it for the next time, but right now, I want to see this position approved.
Okay, my turn. I won't vote for two years, you can, and I'm sorry you'll all show up in the paper with a no vote, because it'll be misconstrued. I agree with Councilmember Costa, I'd do a year and, and come back and try to work on it. I imagine that the motorsports grant, I'm going to say I had seven, eight days in it, at 10 hours a day, so I had 80 hours. Michelle's sitting there, she probably had 80 hours. Teresa's over yonder, I'm sure she had that and some more, along with other people. So, and, and I would love to apply for the Avon grant. I mean, I'll, you know, I now understand enough about grants to at least be tolerably good at applying, and I have my helper, who's better than I am. I'm just very concerned about the future, and I'm, I'm not going to go far out. I'll, I'll, I'll go with one year with you, and that'll, that's the best I can, my conscience is going to do. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you for your support. I don't think I'd be able to vote for a two-year budget allocation at this time either, but then the struggle becomes, you know, we have somebody who is extremely qualified and has done a great job on staff at this time, but, you know, if you see the writing on the wall, I think it's, retention is going to get tough. And so, you know, I, this person may be dedicated to their position, but at the end of the day, we all have to look out for our own well-being in that instance, and so I just want us to be aware that, you know, incrementally, giving these small budget allocations isn't really conducive to a healthy and working environment either. So just something to consider, this position, as we all know, this position's barely hanging on. I want to help it continue, and that's why I'm willing to make this concession. I came in with a preconceived notion that I didn't want to fund it, because we just don't have the money, and I've been convinced otherwise, but for me, it's, it's a year, let's work really hard on this grant funding. I'm not sure I know the department. It would take some time, like I said, away from the position and the department. Hopefully, if there's folks who can assist with that, go that route, but I think that that's what I'm willing to do at this time.
Councilmember Lingle?
Well, if I'm counting the numbers up here, a two-year vote would not pass, and I certainly would want to put the mayor and Councilmember Costa in the position of having a no vote when they are in support of the position. So I will, if someone makes a motion for one year with the promise of looking at grants, I will vote for the one year, because I wouldn't want...
Why don't you make the motion?
Um, no, because I'm not, because I'm not in favor of it. I'm in favor of the two-year position.
All right. Well, I'm happy to do it.
Dirk?
I'll beat you. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and extend the victim advocate position out to the 2015 budget cycle.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Let's vote.
I hope all of you understand how we all feel.
Yeah, I mean, please, please, please realize that Councilmember Costa and the mayor are in favor of the position, and they were, they were only trying to be as fiscally responsible as we all try to be, so do not hold this against them. It was really a 5-0 vote to support you.
Could have been. Okay, let's take a break.
Okay, we'll come back to order, and the next item says Laurel, but it's actually John. She was nice enough to write the lead-in report, and I polished up what I did for everybody last week, and made it look a little bit more like our last meeting, make it look a little more like a regular staff report, and pass these down. And you guys in the audience, all two of you, come, come up here and get one. Come on, come on down, get one. No, you've got to come to Stacy.
Get up here.
You guys need your exercise. You sat there through the whole break.
We can make it.
Yeah, we can send it. I didn't give Joe one, because I figured he doesn't live here. If he puts it on his bumper, it won't make any sense.
It goes through Santa Barbara, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Of course, over there, it might get your window broken. Okay, so you all note, and for the camera, this is what the council members are looking at. This is the universal sticker that's used on business front doors in various vehicles. Hanging up here on the wall, we have the rather-large banner that's park-specific, and that is designed to be put in a park, so people understand that sales tax pays for their park. So I'll just read what I wrote. "The recommendation that the council ad hoc committee recommends that the council direct staff to implement items 1 through 14 below, and that the ad hoc committee implement items 15 and 16 below. Additionally, if the council adopts Lompoc sales tax, pays-for-your, et cetera," has the phrase to be used on the graphics, and the colors on the supplied example has the colors on all the graphics in the Shop Lompoc campaign. "The background is, the concept of a Shop Lompoc campaign was originally approved by the council in 2015." the council in 2010 with council members Starbuck and Mayor Lynn as the ad hoc committee. The ad hoc committee developed a plan," that would be the two of us, "but chose to delay bringing this program to the council until most of the large vacant stores were filled, based on comments we got from people. The newly occupied stores now provide many more shopping choices in Lompoc, and it seems like an opportune time to go forward. The purpose of the marketing campaign is to provide the same Shop Lompoc message in the same graphics design at businesses, city buildings, parks, on local businesses' vehicles, on city general fund vehicles. Additionally, when the staff, when staff funded by the general fund deliver services to the citizens, they will also deliver the Shop Lompoc message on the back of a business card." And I showed samples last time. "The secret to success in advertising is repetition of the graphic image and the message. The Shop Lompoc sticker has previously been placed on the front door of many businesses in Lompoc, and this is an expansion of that." So, discussion, "The city attorney has reviewed the items listed below, items 1 through 16, and found that the stickers, signs, and cards can be legally placed or used as described. The city attorney has also found that the current wording can legally can be used, but suggest an alternative wording. He recommended changing the phrase from 'local sales tax pays for,' et cetera, to 'local sales tax helps pay for,' et cetera. If the alternate text is selected to maintain a consistent message, the stickers already in place on merchant stores and vehicles would need to be replaced, and about 1,000 stickers that are printed and donated, and the one banner that you see, would need to be discarded and replaced. Currently, the $2,000 currently budgeted was based on using the donated stickers and the banner. Additional funds would be needed if the donated stickers or banner were discarded and the message was changed. Fiscal impact, we have $2,000 budgeted for the program. So we, the committee, recommend the following things. Work with the Chamber of Commerce to place a sticker, this one, on the entry door of all the businesses that are willing, and most of them seem to be. Work with the Chamber of Commerce to place a sticker on the back bumper of all vehicles owned by local businesses. Place the sticker on the entrance door of all city buildings, except the landfill, water, and wastewater plants, which are not general fund facilities. However, I will say that the folks from one of those buildings said, well, we could have the sticker too, so that would be a question for the city attorney. And display the sticker at the customer service counters in all city buildings, supported all or in part by the general fund. Place a sticker on city vehicles from departments that receive general funds. Number five, place a fire department-specific sticker, so it would be like the one for the park. It would say, please shop in Lompoc, local sales tax pays for your fire department. Or police, depending. Number five is police, number six is fire. And those would, those stickers would be probably a bit larger than the one that I have here, and they would be scaled for the vehicle. So you don't want a postage stamp on an envelope if you're trying to get a message across, but you don't want an envelope on a postage stamp either, so that it needs to be coordinated for the size of the vehicle, and that would be something that each department would need to work out. Place a large vinyl graphic sticker on the back of all the Colt buses, and stickers inside the bus, as the staff seems, sees appropriate. Place a banner or permanent sign at the principal entrances of each park. The banners are obviously a lot less expensive to print. Place a four-by-eight sign, both entering and leaving Lompoc on H Street and Ocean Avenue, East and West Central Avenue, where city property exists. We don't have property everywhere, so it would have to be where we own the property. And the back of the business cards, again, ask the library and the museum to place a sticker on their entrance doors and at service counters. They're not directly ours, but we could surely ask them to do it. Then work with the TAP-TV staff to create a series of public service announcements for TAP, featuring the various city service, paid, services paid for by the general fund, and ask the Police Foundation, the Fire Foundation, the FARC Foundation to assist in producing those, and we could even try out my brand-new camera. Provide the PSAs created in number 12 above to Comcast for insertion in their schedule, because they have PSA breaks, and also the local TV stations. And then place a two-by-four sign at each entrance to the hike and bike paths. And then, on our side, continue the appointment of myself and Councilmember Starbuck as the ad hoc committee to work with the chamber and city staff on implementing the council-approved Shop Lompoc program, and direct Councilmember Starbuck and myself to provide an update to the council in six months, and then make recommendations on refreshing the Shop Lompoc campaign in 12 months. And that's our proposal. So the one question I would have for the attorney is, if one of the non-general fund facilities wanted to put a sticker on, would that be an issue?
Well, as I understand, the way the funding works, I, I think most of your enterprise funds actually do get assistance from the general fund in how they're operated. They don't pay their, their full load, so it's actually a factual statement.
Okay.
Be more factual, it said helps, but we won't go there.
I know, you like that helps. I just don't want to reprint all those stickers. Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that was one of my questions. City attorney, to use up the stickers we have, it's not illegal, we, we can still use them. If we have reprints, the reprints could say helps.
That's true.
Okay. And then, it looks like, on the back page, page two of two, five and six, where we're talking about on the police vehicles and fire, those have not been printed yet. Is that correct?
None of those larger stickers have been printed.
So those, we should, we should change that immediately from pays to helps? Because right now, they're, I mean, we may as well start becoming more accurate.
I think it's semantics, and frankly, I don't support it, but that would be the decision of the council.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a suggestion for the cars?
Absolutely.
If it was something simpler, like your sales tax at work, go on the police cars, the fire apparatus, you don't have to have a larger placard, just be bigger letters, it'd be easier to read.
Yeah, the difficulty is, if you use mixed messages, they don't complement each other, and having owned a graphics printing business and gone through this, I can tell you that you really want all the same messages. And I appreciate what you said, but that's what's actually more effective.
And then, my other comment, and I'm, I'm half joking, but I'm half sincere as well. There's one area you missed, and that's the big Lompoc Valley Theater sign. I mean, that'd certainly get a message across, but maybe a little bit too gaudy, though.
The drive-in screen.
Drive-in theater, yeah. Well, that's what I'm talking about, you know, possibly, because as people drive out of town, heading towards Santa Maria, one last reminder.
Well, going out of town, we, we own the land on, across from the airport, so getting a sign up there would be pretty easy.
Yeah.
So that one's a little bit less of a struggle, and the drive-in theater is private property.
So my only comment is, future stickers we have printed, I'd like to see them be correct, more correct, and saying helps instead of pays for. And I think we may want to consider what Chief Ralston is saying, just think about it a little bit. Maybe the, the fire department wants something similar. I know the consistent message is what you're trying to get across, but it's something we should consider.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I was going to say that one of the things that we had talked about before, and we're going to need to do, is maybe we could have some type of a rebranding with these stickers, and come up with something a little bit different, too, that, you know, there's a lot of talented people, and I think somebody will come up with something that's going to hit.
I think that the, the point, when he and I were talking about it, was we'd like to use this message now, and get everybody on the same page, and then, you know, 12 months from now, this will be obsolete, and we'll need to, we'll need to redo everything, and then go on and start overall again.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. Councilmember Starbuck and Marilyn, you re, you just hit the nail on the head for what I was going to speak about, which is, as much as I appreciate this effort, the quality and design is less than what I'm used to for large campaigns of this nature. So I, please don't take that as an insult. I think that the work that's been done is fantastic. I think this is exciting. And in fact, Marilyn, although I, it's hard, I have, I have, this is hard for me, this is a much more direct message than putting the word helps. And I know that semantically, and, and actually, that, that's much more accurate, because there's funding sources from multiple areas, and it all comes together in order to, to create our budget. But as long as this is not an issue, I guess, a legal issue, it, it does present a more direct message, that's all I'm saying. But I could go either way on that, I'm, I'm having a little bit of a struggle. So I would be in favor of, I agree, going with this for now, but I would definitely, like you said, there are some amazingly talented folks who could potentially come up with something for us in the same scheme, even color scheme or general style, to keep with that messaging, but just make it look a little bit more polished and professional. I would be in favor of that. The other thing I think we forgot is, that this is, you thought of all of the very tangible hard copy things, but all of the intangible digital things are just as important. So do we want to talk about a digital copy, something that we could put on the bottom of emails, for example? I thought, I'm, I'm going to go home and put this on my Facebook banner, on my Facebook page, that would be kind of neat, because it's like the same general size and format. So, you know, things like that, where people can access this in a digital way, I think would be very helpful. The last thing, I would not be in favor of item nine until this was redesigned. That's my only statement.
Okay, so just so you don't think that I designed this, I actually had two graduate graphic students that worked for me, and this is the design they came up with for exactly the reason that you said, because it was very hard-hitting, and so, because if you know me, you know I couldn't begin to create that with a computer.
Well, although I...
Oh, actually, they went to the design, they graduated from Scott Schaller's program at Cabrillo High School, and they went to the design school in San Francisco. And since you guys are not happy about what they designed, and I can tell you they are.
And again, it wasn't meant as an insult, you know, now that we know where we're going with this a little bit more, as a representation of the community, I think that we, you know, we have the Economic Development Committee coming to talk to us about rebranding, this might be something helpful to include in, in their strategy, perhaps, if they have a certain style that they're coming with things. Maybe it doesn't, but just an idea, maybe it may, to continue that consistent messaging. So that's all I have to say, I think, just the digital version, and then item nine, until, I wouldn't want it until we updated the design and style. Thank you.
Okay. Dwayne, do you want to chime in?
No, I think I've said everything.
You didn't say anything with your mic on.
You guys have said it all. I'd say, we just got to get them out and get people involved. And I'd say, I think that the change, the problem I have with looking at, but this is going to, this one's going to be, up here is going to be at the park, it says it pays for city park, well, taxes pays for multiple things, just not the city park. So if you have it in one, that's fine, but as long as he's didn't say it.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
In seeing the size of that sign, and thinking of where you said things were going to go, I'm assuming that you'll want to have the staff, including the planning staff, look at where the signs would be going, and the types of city buildings are going to go on, so that we don't run up to a situation of the city allowing something that a private person would want to put up and point to your sign and say, well, you did it, why can't I?
Yeah, and the, the four-by-eight sign that we picked out was because that's generally allowed in all zones, so that was the, that was the genesis of that as a sign size way back when, a year, two years ago. Okay. So I think the, I'm still comfortable with having this sign at the entrance to town, and with the understanding that we're going to work on something cooler as time passes, and I think Councilmember Starbuck and I would also work with the Economic Development Committee in that direction. I just want to get this going, and then I think, because, and it might need, might be that we have to do it sooner than 12 months, but it wears out, and when it wears out, you need to change it. I just want to get out there and get going.
Yeah, I was going to say, like Councilmember Costa said, on the four-by-eight sign, this is one that we don't have built, made, you know, or anything, so maybe we ought to just go until we obsolete it, and then rebrand it, like you were saying, the Economic Development Committee. I know the chamber had a contest to rebrand their logo. We could certainly get something going in the next six months, by the time we obsoleted all of these things.
Yep. Okay, so can everybody live with what we currently have, so we have a consistent message?
For the 1,000 stickers and the one banner printed?
No, for everything that we're going to print going forward for this first round, before we go to the next image.
Was that different than what you just said, Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, because I, I know that we have several, a bunch of the stickers, but the banners, there was...
That's, that's it.
Oh, that's the only banner?
That is the only one we have.
I'll have to check the sign ordinance.
Well, it's in a city park, so there really isn't one. We put all kinds of banners up in parks, so...
$2,000 is a limited amount of money, so I wouldn't like to see any of that $2,000 spent on anything additional. I think you guys have a really great start with the 1,000 printed in this sign, and then we can go from there when it comes to actually spending the funds.
Then we might as well stop right now.
Let me throw something out here. Do we want to go ahead and have the Economic Development Committee start looking at something? I will have a Chamber Board of Directors meeting in a week, I could bring it up there, and we should, in two, three months, be able to come up with something, or we'll stay with this, or whatever.
Marilyn, perhaps we can do, I mean, how many fleet vehicles are there? Do we have enough stickers to cover the fleet vehicles we have?
These are too small. If you put them on a vehicle, they're lost.
So what were these intended for particularly?
These are merchant doors, city doors, front counters, all those things.
So you don't have anything larger?
I, we did not, we printed a whole bunch of these.
That's the challenging part. I, it's hard for me to make a decision feeling like I am making that decision only because we have these stickers, and not perhaps because it is the best decision, but I don't want to see this lose the momentum, so I'm open to recommendations.
Well, that's why when we laid this out, having listened to what people were saying, we started this out, is what we're going to do for now, and in, you know, in a year's time, the message has to be changed anyway. You know, but we're, we're a long ways down the road with this, and so we'd like to carry it forward and get it done, and then when we have a redesign, we're going to go back and put a new sticker on everything, anyway. These stickers are actually designed to be good for about 10 years, because they're laminated, but that was just because.
I guess my concern is, is the money, you know, $2,000 isn't, gosh, I think we're spending a long time talking about this, $2,000 isn't a lot, and so if that's spent, and we don't have any additional funds for the new printing costs or new design, that's, I don't know what the plan is at that time.
I'm sure at that time, if we wanted to, we could find some, as we did for the Victim Advocate this evening.
Mr. Mayor, if I could also, with our fleet vehicles, our detective, our undercover vehicles, could we have an exemption so that those aren't included?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We want one on your car.
That's fine.
No, and that's, and that's why it's written in here that you guys are going to make those decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. As long as there's one on your car, we're good with everything else. Matter of fact, just put 10 on the back of your car and forget everything else. Just kidding. Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. We've been talking about this Shop Lompoc campaign, I think, as long as I've been on the council now, and I think it's time we start moving it forward, even though it's not a perfect plan, as we've all discussed. I think, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation to recommend staff to, well, recommendation. Go forward with your, go forward with the ad hoc committee's recommendation.
Okay, and with two exceptions to that, if you would include in your motion, number, in number three, we would delete accept, because the city attorney said those people can have a sticker too. And then adding number 17, that we place the logo on our digital media, as Councilmember Costa recommended.
As modified, yes.
Okay, and then a second? Just as we just, these two changes?
Delete three and adding 17.
I'll second.
Okay. Now we've got that, but we haven't had public comment, so we're going to have public comment. I forgot about it. Come on down.
Ms. Wall, local resident, I just have a question about the funding. Actually, since the businesses are gonna benefit from this, certainly, you know, the city wants the tax dollars, the businesses are gonna benefit, what is wrong with asking the Chamber of Commerce to help with funding on this? We fund them, they're funded by their businesses. What's wrong with asking them for a thousand or two thousand dollars? In fact, I'm wondering where our money goes anyway, but I think it meets the criteria. You're meeting with them in a week on their board meeting, can't we put this forward to them?
I could certainly ask.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, you get to testify. All right, cool.
Mike Luther, City Engineer. I just had a comment on number seven with the, I just wanted to clarify, if this is considered an advertisement, then the culpuses are federally funded, we might have to charge for that, if it's considered an advertisement.
I know, I asked the city attorney that question, he said we could do it, so you're gonna have to get together with him. If you guys decide we can't do it, then we won't do it, because we're sure not going to jail for it. Well, unless we get adjoining cells. Okay, seeing no one else rise, Councilmember Costa.
Marilyn, I, with two thousand dollars allocated, understandably, we're not gonna be able to fund all of these, I don't believe, and I'm just curious, what manner will the ad hoc committee recommend staff go about funding these items?
I think we'll talk to them and see what they recommend, and then we'll, we'll work on it with them.
Because one really high resolution digital graphic the size of a bus will be more than two.
No, they're, they're not gonna be bus size. You know, the ones in the back of the bus might be this big, so they're more readable. We're, we're not gonna wrap a bus.
Okay.
By any stretch of the imagination. Unless we find a lot more money somewhere, under a rock. Councilmember, I'm sorry, city administrator.
Marilyn, just for clarification, you stated that at this time, we do not have an appropriate sticker for the fleet vehicles.
This is the design, but we don't necessarily have one that's the right size for some vehicle.
The right size, that's what I mean.
Like for an auto, this might work, but for a pickup truck, you probably want something a little bigger.
So just for a recommendation, could the ad hoc committee meet with the chiefs and staff?
Yeah, well, it's really gonna be their decision on what, what fits. Yeah.
Just one quick question.
Sure.
The interesting thing will be, once you get these out, no matter what size vehicle, once you get enough of these out, everybody knows what, what it's gonna say. They're gonna say on the back of the car going, and don't have to be, it's nice to have them bigger, but they know what that's gonna say, shop lambo.
Well, and I, I know that there's five cars here tonight that'll have one right away, six. That's right, you already have yours.
I've got mine on two years.
You're ahead of me, they were on the tow trucks, and they went away with the tow trucks. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, let me vote on the motion, please. That passes 5-0. Thank you very much. And now, well, let's take another break. Just kidding. City Attorney, you're up.
Thank you, I think.
How many, how many times did we not get to this? It's probably a world's record.
What's on the agenda is sort of a continuation of the performance review that you were doing of me, and you asked a few questions for me to respond to that I advised that you really couldn't discuss those in closed session, so you wanted to discuss them, so we're here to discuss them. Do you want me to go through the, I mean, you have the report, do you want me to go through each question?
Why don't you summarize each question, and, and summarize the response?
The first question was, are you really doing as much as you can to make sure that the legal costs are not too high? And I said, yes, I am.
How come, how come we all said no? That's what I don't understand.
The second question-
No, no, wait, but your, your response was a little more in detail, I think you should summarize a little bigger summary, because-
Well, the, the, one of the suggestions to try to cut down the cost was the possibility of doing things by teleconferencing, going to the council meetings and the planning commission meetings by teleconferencing, rather than having to pay for some of the time that I'm on the road. And although that technically could be done, I recommend against it, because I think it's helpful for your council to be in the meeting and seeing the context of what's going on, which doesn't really happen if you're doing something by teleconference, even if you're doing it on Skype. With regard to the amount of time that I spend at City Hall, meaning office hours, that's another way that you could reduce costs by not having me be here for office hours. In fact, as I said in the report, my other clients actually don't make that request of me. I think part of that is because you were going from a full-time city attorney to a contract city attorney, and there's, there was more availability of an attorney onsite, being here to be able to answer questions, which actually has, I think, worked well for the city, because when I am here, we establish meeting, we set up meetings when I'm going to be here. And when, although you have a lot of things going on, my time isn't 100% spent, needing to be spent while I'm here at office hours, working on lambo matters, but I'm still here if someone comes in the door, but I'm actually working on another client's item, and you're not paying for that, the other client's paying for that. So you're getting the benefit of my presence without having to pay for that, factor me sitting in that chair.
Can, can we bill part of your travel time to them too, on a per hour basis?
I, I do, when I'm going between here and another place.
Okay.
Or if I'm on the phone with another client, I don't charge you for that travel time, I'm charging the client for the, the fact that I'm on the phone with them. I do the reverse of that, too. Okay.
Darn it.
Then you also wanted to know if my firm could take on other responsibilities that were or are handled by other firms for the city, and I put down the list of things actually we are handling, which were, some were handled by other firms, and we are, for the most part, we're doing most of your legal work, we don't do your work, comp work, and we don't do some of the very specialized things that some of the departments need, but for the most part, we are doing majority of your legal work.
Joe, what would you say, in terms of how much we used to farm out compared to how much we farm out now, what would you say the reduction has been? And I realize this is a guesstimate.
Would you have any idea, Brad? I, I really don't. I wouldn't wanna guess.
Little, quite a bit?
I would say majority.
Okay.
And the last, the last item you asked about was, why in the exhibit, there's a provision for the firm to be paid $300 an hour, when that's not really what we're paid most of the time? And that, that was, that, that is set there when, when you're doing a development deal with a developer, we have a provision in the agreement that says, we can charge $300 an hour, assuming the developer's gonna pay that $300 an hour. So it's not money that the city would pay, and we actually haven't done that, because we haven't had that kind of, because development's difficult right now to get, we don't wanna scare people away when they have to pay my fees as well as their own attorney's, but we're not charging, the firm doesn't charge you that $300, we still charge the rates, which, the rates that we charge are $150 an hour for the first 50 hours a month, and then $165 after that. And there are certain things that we charge a little more for, some of the successor agency activities, and some of the special litigation that we do, not the, the litigation, trip and fall litigation, that's still handled at the $165 an hour, but those special writs of mandate or something like that that we have to go to court for, we, we charge at the $180 an hour. Our law clerks charge 95, and our paralegals charge 45. So, and, and we haven't had an increase in the rates since we started here as city attorney in November 2009. Actually, when we became city attorney in 2009, we reduced our, the amount that we were charging per hour for the then redevelopment agency to $180, rather than the $200 that we were charging before.
Quantity lot discount.
So that's all I have, if you have questions?
Questions for Joe? Councilmember Lingle.
Just a comment, just mainly for the public. You know, you heard a figure of $150 an hour, and that seems like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money. But just a little history, when, well, before Mr. Panoni came on, at one time, well, for a long time, we had two city attorneys, two full-time city attorneys, here, paying big bucks, and we went down to one city attorney just prior to Mr. Panoni coming here. And then even with the one city attorney bringing on a contract, we've, I believe it was in the neighborhood of about $100,000, from going from one full-time in-house attorney to a contract group, where now, as was just stated, they do a lot of the work that we used to farm out to other, to other agencies, so we saved a lot of money. And just personally, Joe, I wanna just tell you that I really appreciate working with you. Speaking for myself, I don't know about the rest of these guys, so, I find, find you very pleasant to work with, and always informative for me, so thank you.
Yeah, I think one of the important things that I noticed looking back was that we, previously, when we farmed a lot out, we pay a lot of, paid a lot of very, varied rates, most of which were higher than yours. So not counting our argument over the shop lambo phrase, I mean, I'm happy. If we got along on everything, it wouldn't be any fun. Okay, is there any, oh, let's open, oh, I'm sorry, you're so far away.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying too close. I just wanna go back to response number two, if I read this right, these are the, this whole list of things you divorce now, under the contract, which is labor negotiations, utilities, transportation, airport, telecommunications, water rights, litigation for personal injury, et cetera, and police matters. So I think that is all under the same contract, and that's put in the, I think that's where it's coming back to help us where we used to have two. Now, when we did have two attorneys, we had, the one attorney took care of all the law cases on, and it saved us a bunch over what we had before on contracts. But I've seen what you're doing here now, I think that's great, because if you're taking that biggest contingency under the one heading, it's cheaper for us in the long run.
Okay, I'll open this to public comment, is anybody out here that wants to talk to us about this? I see two people looking at each other, but no one's rising. Okay, closed public comment, come back, I don't think we have any action on this. Any other comment from a council member? Seeing no lights, we'll move on to item number 10. Seeing no lights, we'll move on to item number 10. The fleet lease purchasing financing and refinancing of prior lease financing agreements. Try to say that three times fast. And our Management Services Director, Brad Wilkie.
Thank you, council members, Mayor. Just to start with, some history of what the financing was, is providing. It allows the, primarily the, the fleet services to extend out the cost of our vehicles over the expected life of the vehicles, and matches up the costs with the use. One of the items that came up in the last time we did this financing, which was in 2010, was a comment from the successful bidder that, in the future, if we did this again, there were some constraints that allowed for only two vendors to propose last time, and they both said, and others said, that it would've been easier if there was an ability to execute the contracts within the timeframes that they had the interest rates available to them. So they, they were afraid of losing the lock they had on the interest rates, because it would take a fair amount of time for us to come back to council to get, get their approval. That was the genesis of this request, which is basically asking you to, within parameters, ask for an approval to allow staff, at the staff level, to execute the winning bid, as long as that bid is within the parameters that are laid out within the staff report and within the resolution. There's likely going to be more information that the winning bidder would like to do, but I thought it would be prudent to go ahead and do this in the way we're doing it, so that, because of the interest rate environment that we're in, we could capture an interest rate that would be favorable for both the new financing and the new vehicles that are proposed, as well as to refinance the existing structures that are either somewhere between two and a half and about 10 years to maturity, and we can receive some economic benefit for the outlying agreements by reducing our interest rate. In the proposal, I talk about trying to get at, at least a three-year payback, and what that means is that, right now, each of the agreements have some sort of prepayment buyout, and they're approximately 1% of the principal balance, roughly. So to, for us to be able to pay that interest buyout, and also to get savings, an overall savings on our interest that we pay, what I put in here is that we would have to get that paid back within three years. Based on, a couple weeks ago, I got some numbers from a, our financial advisor, and the rates that we probably wouldn't be able to expect right now are somewhere between two and two and a half percent. And at those rates, we would be much lower than a three-year payback, so we would be saving money earlier. About a month ago, the Fed started some conversations that might lead to a reduction in their monetary policy, which immediately spiked rates, and municipal rates may not be as susceptible to that rate spike, but they, if rates start going up, all the rates will eventually start going up. So one of the other things I was trying to do was to be able to cap, if that continues, be able to capture it before we lose the ability to get a three-year payback. I do apologize, there's a disconnect between the staff recommendation, which provides for the mayor to sign the execution documents, but the resolution itself, I believe, puts that at staff level with the, at the, not the discretion, but including attorney's sign-off on it. So I think I'll go in a little bit, we have about $2.5 million of financing that is proposed for the 1315 cycle, that will, that should go ahead regardless of what the interest rates are, because the budget was proposed with that in mind. In the last budget cycle, the 1113 cycle, we had a placeholder for our financing, but we did not do one. So what we, instead of that, instead of doing that, we basically drew down most of the reserves that we have in the fleet internal service fund, so we effectively self-financed, but we wouldn't be able to do that again, because we used up most of that, the funding that was set aside to do that, that kind of activity. So we'll, we need to go back out and borrow again, because of the, the structure that we set up to minimize the effect on all the using departments, which include general fund and enterprise funds. With that, I'll stop at this point in time, in case there's any questions.
So just so I understand, are you indicating that we need to change the resolution to say mayor, or the staff report to say city administrator?
You actually don't need to change either of it, it's okay the way it is, because the, when we reviewed, when I reviewed it, I was okay with leaving it mayor-designee, because you're gonna be designating tonight the city administrator, which is what the resolution does, so it's okay.
Life is good. Okay, any questions for Brad at this time? Okay, open the meeting for public comment, any public comment at this time? Nobody, the two of you are running forward. Closed public comment, come back to questions for Brad. Any questions for Brad? No questions for Brad.
I do wanna just mention that the RFP for this financing, both the refinancing and the financing, has been out in the street since about June 27th, I believe, and we've had seven interested parties sign up as vendors, so we have a fairly large pool of people that are interested in doing this financing. We've had several calls from them, clarifying questions, asking about some of our finances, so we're, we're hopeful to get a, a number of vendors proposing.
And I hope you send a, set it out to that guy that sent you and I-
Yes.
-an email a month for most of eternity.
We had several people that had continued to ask for, to be on that list, and every single person that had done that over the last couple of years is, were provided the RFP.
Okay, so therefore I move that we adopt Resolution 586513, authorizing the mayor as a designee to execute the necessary agreement- as a designee to execute the necessary agreement with the successful bidder to do items 1, 2, and 3. And I'd be looking for a second.
I'll second.
And do we have any other discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? That passes 5-0, thank you.
Thank you.
You're hereby sent out to go shopping. Do we have any written communications at this time? Nope. Oral communications, your last two minutes to talk to us, not everybody at once, no one rises, none. Council requests comments, meeting reports, et al. From the right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On July 5, I sat at the Old Town Market and entertained a lot of questions from the public, and it was very enjoyable. On the 8th, I attended the City Utility Commission meeting. On the 10th, I attended a veterans' meeting over at the Veterans Memorial Building. On the 11th, I was here in City Hall for the Police Academy graduation, which was very enjoyable. I think we filled the chamber, council chambers here, and I believe there was even people sitting out in the lobby, it was a great turnout. And then again, on the 12th, I attended the Old Town Market and sat at the council meeting, or council table, and I believe Councilmember Starbuck has a correction to make about the number of murders here in town.
Yes, I do. No, I did misstate the amount of murders in Lompoke. It was not seven, it was three, I apologize for that.
I see, there he is.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to say something really good about our police department, too, also. I have to say that I rode with Sergeant Stats on July 4, and it was probably one of the more entertaining July fours I've had in quite a while, between fireworks and meth addicts and everything else that night. It was very good and very professional. I got to do the booking, the jail, the whole thing, and I'm going to do it again, I'll let you know, but I appreciate and thank you. I was having a thought the other day, while a tree crashed on my friend's car, and I thought, maybe we should ask our risk management people about these stone pines. We're hearing more, they're falling, something's going on, and I think we need to look down the road about, what are we going to do with them? And we do have risk management people, it's something I think we might want to consider.
Councillor Hombdal?
Oh, I just wanted to, Councilmember Starbuck has advised me that they're going to be doing a professional assessment of those stone pines.
Councillor Hombdal?
Yeah, two things. One, I was here for the Police Academy sign-off, that was excellent, and also the best building. But also, I wanted to bring up, we talked about the bike race, and I know you had a meeting. I would like to have, I don't know, who's going to handle it, or we should have here ourselves, a workshop on the people in Lompoke as it relates to the bike race. They like the race, but I think there's some landowners may have some ideas that they'd like to bring forward. So I think, how we set it up, and I don't know what you had in your meeting, but you may want to send a notice out to everybody on that course, if they have any concerns of what the things were stated and everything else. And so, I was thinking of a workshop, and I'm glad you already started, because they're going to be here next year. The sooner we start, the sooner we get the landowners and property owners and others lined up that far in advance, it's going to make it a lot better.
Councillor Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. Councilmember Lingel, you said you were at Old Town Market on July 5, which you may have been, but you were also there on July 12, which is when I was there. Oh, did you say both days? I didn't hear that, sorry. Well, you were right then. Anyway, I went to Old Town Market and not only enjoyed the various questions, but took some time, and Councilmember Lingel was very nice to allow me to do this, to go check out the wine tasting area, which was a good time also. Chief Ladapow was there, a lot of people, you guys were raising some money, I think, for the foundation. Yeah, raising glasses and money. So it was really great. I mean, you know, the weather got a little chilly, but it really wasn't that bad, and the turnout, especially when they have those wine events and live music and everything, was really great. The other announcement I wanted to make is that I was in the media recently about a potential conflict of interest due to an employer that I had in Santa Maria, because I sit on the Air Pollution Control District of Santa Barbara County as an appointee from the city of Lompoke. Now, while that's not the topic of conversation, I just wanted to let you know that, one of the things in question was that the folks on the board did not know where I worked. So, I recently accepted a new position, and I'm excited to announce to the community, and to the chiefs as well, who I know have been active in this role, working with this individual, I've taken the job as the Director of Community Health for the Lompoke Valley Community Health Organization. So, Ms. Judy Taggart left of Santa Barbara, and they had a nationwide search, and it's been a long time coming, and I've been looking for an opportunity such as this one, so I'm excited to say that that's how I'll be working. And I immediately spoke to the city attorney to ensure I understood the rules for conflict of interest, which I believe I do, and if I didn't before I talked to him, now I definitely do. So I will have to tread lightly on, of course, a few things, but I just wanted everybody to be aware.
So are we still a heel city? Or is that a conflict now?
I don't believe that's a conflict. We'll have, it'll be case by case, but heel city is something different than healthy Lompoke. But the safety school grant was with healthy Lompoke, so we'll have to tread lightly, like I said, but Councilmember Lingel's worked for the healthcare district for many years, and there hasn't been too much of a conflict, so I think it'll be a very similar case, but I just want everybody to be aware.
Well, I want to tell you that having, knowing where you worked, and what you did, and what you looked at, I never saw a conflict of interest in the first place. It seemed like a giant political backstabbing, frankly, so. If anybody out there saw it a different way, I'd love to talk to you. Okay, so I didn't bring my daybook, so I'm probably not going to hit every single thing. I didn't, there was nothing that I did that was at city expense. We had a mayor's and manager's meeting in Buellton last Friday, and also the mayor's meeting in Solvang. Jim Richardson hosted, Koncho Asajin was there, and talked with us, all the mayors, about what was going on in Sacramento. It looks like they're not going to steal any more money from us right now, because they have enough of their own, which is good, because I don't think we have any left to And then Peter Adam was there and talked to us about what was going on in the county, and them working forward with their budget challenges. I also met with some economic development prospects, and the universal theme was, you guys are really great, we've heard about you, and now we're here to check it out. So, our reputation precedes us, and it's all good things. I had an opportunity Monday to meet with the new president of Allen Hancock College, and he and I toured the public safety facility together, and talked at length about the positive impact of the public safety facility on Lompoke and the whole central coast, and some help that they needed to get it going. And he has managed, in the college system, he was in a fire academy, complete, and then they also provided the staffing for the sheriff's academy up there, so he's well aware of it, was very, very excited about the facility, and amazed at all the things that it has. And so, we see a lot of support from him going forward. Prior to that, I had met the week before with the Hancock staff to try to put a little more statistical information together, particularly with regard to room nights and restaurant meals, and try to get a better handle on what that's going to be for our community, so that we're better prepared for it. I rode with Chief Ladapow on 4th of July, we had a wonderful time running around Lompoke. The biggest fireworks display that we saw, and we went chasing after, turned out to be them shooting the leftovers from our city fireworks display, but we sure thought we had a live one, didn't we, chief? With regard to the stone pine issue, I was getting, and somebody mentioned this to me two weeks ago, and I apologize to staff, I never carried the message home. There is apparently an Italian Stone Pine Association that has, in Italy, that has very detailed information on taking care of your stone pine. It is unfortunately in Italian, but somebody actually had it translated once, and it proved to be a very valuable document, it's now lost, but I'm sure that a quick internet search would find them, and we might be able to gain some knowledge from the Italians. I attended both the Old Town Markets, but I was happy to be off-duty and able to go wine tasting, so thanks, guys, for covering those ones. And then, just because I keep forgetting to say it, there's an abandoned bicycle criterion sign at the entrance to the alley in the 100 block of West Chestnut, that I keep forgetting to say something to. So chief, if you could let somebody know they lost their sign, I keep thinking I'm going to pick it up, but I haven't had the truck. So, the news is all good out there, people had a wonderful time at fireworks, out walking around, I met literally hundreds of people. The one thing that they asked for was a safer place to go and shoot fireworks if they lived in apartments, and the chief and I both saw that, and they'll be coming back to us with a recommendation. But everybody had a wonderful time, and there were tremendous positive comments. And the other thing that somebody said to me is, this is the most number of people that I've seen out on the street in Lompoke in forever, hanging out and talking together. So, neighbors meeting neighbors and sharing fireworks, it was really cool. And that's all I have to report, so we are therefore, unless someone else has their light on, nope, adjourned to the Lompoke City Council at a regular meeting at 7:00 PM on August 6. Thank you for coming.